Okay, I'd like to call the Order of Business, January 25th, 2022, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please take your roll call?
Yes, Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Winsell.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this point, I would like to have our Council Chair pro tem, Ray Muscat, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Chair pro tem. Next up on our agenda is Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman, if you don't mind, on this one, because we have a special edition, I'm going to have Council Chair pro tem.
Okay, awesome. I'll do the next one.
Yes, go ahead, Council Chair pro tem.
I approve that the, I have moved that the City of Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amended agenda for the regular meeting of January 25th, 2022, as submitted with the addition from Mayor Bill Bazey on item 8E, the-
Plant Moran.
The Plant Moran addendum, PLLC engagement letter, as outlined in 3A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydoun. Any discussions on that item? Hearing none?
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question on item 8C. Can I make it now or wait for the Agenda Approval?
On item, you said 8C?
Yeah, there's a date on there. It says December. It should be December instead of January.
I think we could change that when we get to 8C. That'd be fine.
Thank you.
That'd be fine. Thank you. Okay, any other discussions? All right, hearing none, we'll take that to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is number four, which is Approval of the Minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes of the regular meeting of January 11th, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is item number five. I'm sorry, five, I'm sorry, we still have 4B.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun, go ahead.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes of the special meeting of January 13th, 2022, as outlined in 4B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is number five, which is Public Hearings, and comment on Agenda Items Only. At this particular point, if anybody from the public, any audience first, and then after that, we'll do on Zoom, would like to go up and speak, you'll have two minutes to speak on anything that's on the agenda tonight. So we'll go ahead and start with the audience. If anybody would like to go up, you'll have two minutes each. I'm sorry? Okay, you could go ahead and read it, if you have it.
I don't have it.
You want to pull it up? Pull it up on your computer.
That was, yeah, from Rachel LaPointe.
Okay, you want to read it?
It's not on an agenda.
Yes, it is. There's something on that on the agenda.
I can read it if you want.
Yes, please.
Give me a minute to find it.
Sure.
Well, you can ask the audience if they have any questions. Let me give you a-
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to do the audience first. And somebody does it, and we'll go ahead and go to that one.
It is related to an Agenda Item?
Well, yeah, because he has an, the mayor has an appointment. It's, yeah, it's on the mayor's appointment. Okay, so is there anybody else from the audience here that has any comments on any Agenda Items? All right, hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and go to Zoom, please?
I don't see any hands up.
No hands up on Zoom?
Hands up on Agenda Items.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Hi.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Pamela Swirple, 5866, Kenmore, Dearborn Heights.
Ma'am, I could interrupt you for just a second. So on our last meeting, a lot of people on Zoom could not hear or fully understand people that were speaking. If you don't mind, be as close as possible to the microphone.
Pamela Swirple, 5866, Kenmore, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48127.
Great.
Question I have is for the mayor's agenda. It doesn't necessarily list everything. I'm wondering if his agenda also includes the new hire that he did yesterday?
Okay.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
So is it on anything here, or do I have to wait till the end to be able to?
Yeah, if you have any additional comments on that, that will be at the end, but it will definitely be addressed. There's going to be some questions coming up on that.
So that will, so not during the meeting it'll come up?
It'll be during, it'll be at the end of the meeting, during more than likely the public comments section.
Okay, so our voices will be heard?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And each, each member of the audience, provided it's, you know, different item that they bring into the table, will have three minutes each. And there are two residents that asked for additional time, so we'll have one minute each additional.
Can I have additional time too?
Usually you have to ask for-
Who said uh-uh? Uh-uh. Who said uh-uh? Because I don't understand uh-uh. I say, I understand yes and no.
I said no, because it should have been-
No, I heard uh-uh. That's not professional.
It should have been requested beforehand.
Council Chair, point of order.
That's not professional. Shame on you.
So ma'am-
Well, it could be shame on me, but that's what we discuss, that's a council.
Councilman?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else from the audience? All right, hearing none. Ma'am Clerk, you said there's nobody on Zoom?
No.
Okay, Councilman, do you have the letter from Ms. LaPointe?
You want me to read it?
No, go ahead, you can read it.
All right, it's addressed to the Dearborn Heights City Council, dated January 25th, 2022, and it's from South End resident Rachel LaPointe.
If I may interrupt you, just in case for those in the audience and on Zoom, this is in regards to item 8D on the reports from Mayor, Community and Cultural Relations Commission appointment. Go ahead.
I'm writing to you today regarding item 8D, the appointment of the Community and Cultural Relations Commission. The City Council has asked Mayor Bazey on multiple occasions to provide more information on appointments so that council can approve them competently. The appointment does not contain that information, and the situation has shown that there are multiple things that should be corrected with the process of appointments to all commissions. Here are the facts of this incident. Number one, last year, Chairwoman Latonya Gator approached me about whether I would be interested in serving as a commissioner in the future. As I am already involved in the commission as a volunteer, and because I believe in the commission's missions and goals, I told her that I would be willing to serve if someone needed to resign or if there are other circumstances requiring a new person. Number two, on Monday, January 17th, 2022, late in the evening, Commissioner Zadi Zabaic-
Sadie.
Sadie.
Sadie, I'm sorry. Contacted me to let me know she would be resigning and suggested that I email Mayor Bazey and Chairwoman Latonya Gator if I were interested in serving the rest of her term. I did so the next morning. Two hours later, Mayor Bazey replied that he had already submitted the appointment. He stated he chose someone who had spoken to him at the MLK Walk. Chairwoman Gator also informed me that last year, the commission had created a democratic process for appointments that Mayor Bazey had been involved in at that time. He did not follow this process, nor even give Chairwoman Latonya Gator the courtesy of consulting her before choosing someone for the appointment. I feel very strongly that for this commission, the current commissioners should be involved in the decision. They should have input because they are the ones who will work with the new person. Imagine for a moment that someone who is racist or transphobic wanted to join the commission so they, so that they could derail the commission's work.
Okay, Councilman, if I may interrupt you for a sec. So during this particular part, comments on Agenda Items Only, a person's allowed two minutes. So I don't know how many more sentences you got left.
It's about another third of the-
Okay, either read it super fast, or you're going to have to give us the last paragraph.
I'm gonna, let's see if I can summarize. Apparently, they all needed, all they needed to do was ask and be appointed. And then the, the letter indicates that her displeasure with the appointment process and not involving the members of the Diversity Commission in the appointment.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Council Chair, I have something on that Agenda Item.
Okay, so you'd have to, are you speaking as a resident or as a councilman?
Yes, as a resident, I can speak as a-
Okay, go ahead.
Do you want me to state my address?
Your address, please. At least street name.
Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights, and just on item 8D. And I read that email earlier. I also know who the mayor's appointing. I know Macy actually for many, many years. She's, she's an attorney. She's good to this community. She was at the Martin Luther King Rock. I serve on the Culture Relations Commission as the Vice President. I personally know both of them very well. And I think either option would have been good, but I really know Macy. I know she do a phenomenal job on there. So that's just me, so that the residents at home that are watching this. And it's nothing against either one. I don't know where the displeasure stands, if it's the appointment position, but I don't know myself also if the appointment comes to the mayor, because that was appointed by the late mayor for Sadie, or if it's to council. So if it is to the mayor, then the mayor has the right to be able to appoint Macy to that, to that spot. And if it goes to council, then the mayor would put it up forward and technically where council's voting and approving of it.
Yeah, council just approves it or denies it.
Yeah, but that was-
The point is that the mayor, but I know some of the people in the, in the commission feel that this is something that should be left up to them to be able to decide on.
Yeah, but I believe it's the mayor's appointment for that actual seat. So I don't, I just wanted to be very clear that that seat that Macy's going to, I believe is, from what I'm knowing, I could be mistaken, I could be wrong. Sadie could have been appointed by the count, former council.
Um, it was-
Ma'am Clerk, go ahead.
Sadie was appointed by the council.
But what if the council just votes on-
The mayor, the mayor has five seats on the commission. The council has two.
Oh, okay.
For his appointment. And the council, of course, concurs with the mayor's approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Then that's different, but.
Thank you, Mr. Baydoun. I didn't want to call you Councilman, because you was-
Hey, I spoke as a resident. Yes.
Okay, um, is there any other comments? So Chief of Staff Hernandez, just in case, are you speaking as a resident? Okay, so as a resident, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Oh, hello. North Lafayette Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I just wanted to point out that this item did come to my attention, and it has also come to my attention that when Mo Baydoun was appointed as a resident appointee, he was appointed when he wasn't on council, and he is now on council. I do know that there is an opening in the ex officio portion of the Community and Cultural Relations Commission. So I was just wondering if that could be a potential option to move Mo to one of the ex officio positions and then allow the commission to reappoint someone else, whoever they choose.
So resign, let her-
Not resign, move to the ex officio position.
Council Chair, we can do that at the next meeting.
So what I'm thinking, maybe, because there's still a lot of open items on this, I think it's probably best, I know it's still early right now, but when we get to it, maybe to table it.
No, what I mean is, we can let this one go through. At the next meeting, I talked to Commissioner Latonya. So at the next meeting, we're going to make an adjustment. We're going to make Councilman Baydoun as the ex officio. Then we'll interview the next person to take that spot.
Allow the opening then?
Yes.
Okay. We'll address that when we get there.
I'll negotiate it.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get, when we get there. All right, um, no other comments from the audience or on Zoom, correct, Madam Clerk? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims 61 through 631 as submitted.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Consideration of Bids. Number seven. A.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for a new rescue squad to medics specialty vehicles in the amount of $213,735, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders as outlined in 7-8.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Nancy Breyer. Is there any discussions on this? With no further discussions, we're going to take it to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And next item on the agenda. By the way, at this particular point, I'm going to take this little moment just to thank Dana in the Clerk's office for the great job that she does on these motions. You guys have no idea how much easier she makes our job. So thank you, Dana, again. I know this is off, off the script, but I had to say it. All right, next item on the agenda is item number, or item 7B.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council-
Okay, I'm sorry, let me, let me finish. I'm sorry, Councilman. I'll tell you, I'll tell you, yeah, it's something else. So next item on the agenda is item 7B, Chief of Staff Hernandez, request for bids, citywide master plan. Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for a citywide master plan as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Um, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on this item?
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I think this is, this is an excellent, this is something that the city has been waiting for, for a long time, to have actually a business master plan for the whole city. So I think we're moving in the right direction, so.
I totally agree, totally agree. If you don't know where you're going, you'll never get there.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Was there any other discussion items on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 7C, and it'd be City Engineer Ali Deeb, aerial survey of the Ecorse Creek Channel.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for an aerial survey of the Ecorse Creek Channel as outlined in 7C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'd just like to make a quick comment for discussion. Mr. Deeb and Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate you continuing the work on the Ecorse Creek Challenge. And I thank you again for not making this thing just political talk when there's elections, and then leaving it alone for the next four years, and then bringing it up again four years later. So again, and I'm going to say this at every council meeting, whenever I get a chance, our Ecorse Creek Challenge should continue to be looked at, and I thank you for thinking outside the box with the start with the aerial survey. Thank you.
Councilman? And maybe Ali Deeb can come over here and just kind of explain it to some of the residents and what this survey is and what this actually does. And again, I will just echo what Council pro, or Council Chair Abdullah Saad to the mayor and Ali Deeb and the administration on the Ecorse Creek. Going to the South End, a lot of the issues were the trees, and then we're working on that, and then the Ecorse Creek. So I appreciate you guys putting your best foot forward on that.
Thank you. So as, as the Chair has indicated, we, this is the first step. We were looking at the challenge of the Ecorse Creek outside of the original studies that were done by the Corps of Engineers, by the county. We all know what the challenges are. This is an actual working progress. So the survey will indicate it, we're taking advantage of the winter conditions, no leaves on the trees. The survey will pinpoint the choke points on the creek. For the five, five and a half miles within the, oh, I'm sorry.
On Zoom, they're having a hard time hearing, so, especially because you have masks on, which, which is fine. No, that's fine, you keep it on if you want, but just you've got to come as close as possible to the microphone.
So we're looking at the entire run of the creek within the City of Dearborn Heights to identify, the survey will identify the choke points, the areas that we know we have potential restrictions. And step two is, after the aerial photography is done, we will pinpoint the locations and actually have a ground crew determine what the scope will be to address those choke points. I don't have a lot of controls over other communities and the flow and mother nature, but at least within our city, we'll be able, for a relatively reasonable price, identify the areas of concern and then put a plan to correct that.
My next question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So we'll do the aerial survey, we'll get the images, we'll do those steps. When do we proceed, when do we potentially see the next step happen? So for doing this-
So I have a lot of potential funding currently being, you know, made available to us, but they're all looking for a shovel-ready project. This is what we do to create a shovel-ready project. We will put together a plan, you know, after the survey is completed, and then we identify and put an estimate for these locations and then, you know, and proceed to the step two. Hopefully, we can get the survey done before spring, before the leaves start growing, and then within the next season, I mean, this coming season, in the summer, we'll be able to do the actual construction.
Thank you. I asked that the administration, the mayor, and you, Ali Deeb, as a city engineer, who's doing a phenomenal job, just make it a priority, please.
It is a priority, and the mayor-
Thank you, Mr. Deeb. Councilman Ahmad, go ahead.
Mr. Deeb, those future plans, is Wayne County included in those plans, or is it the city by itself?
So depending on what we find out, it's actually city at this point, because if we find out that the issue, we all know what the situation with, it's the county Drain Commission that is responsible for the maintenance of the creek. So we, and they always claim, you know, that the funding is not enough because they get paid per mile. But we weren't able to actually show on paper what the issues are. Now, we know, we've seen them, I mean, I personally have driven every cross, and then we looked at the outflow pipes from our city, which is the main reason, they're restricted. We have, we have dredging to do, we have restrictions on the actual creek bed itself. But until we actually have a survey and an estimate, and we can show on paper and identify the areas, put an estimate, and then we can sit down and talk. I'm open to every possible funding source, including grant, county. I know Wayne County is getting ARPA money as well, so we can add that, but we need to have a defined project and actual numbers so we can sit down and talk.
I love it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Councilman Coniston, go ahead.
Thank you. And City Engineer Deeb?
Yes, sir.
So, but the City of Dearborn Heights doesn't have equipment that could do a job like that.
No.
So, so is that something, do you have any idea that Wayne County has, or it would have to be-
The county doesn't have it either. The county actually contracts these, but they haven't done it. I mean, it, it is a specialized piece of equipment, obviously, to go in the muck and, and, now. You can, you can do a little of that work from the bridges or the crossovers, but for the most part, you need to define where the restrictions are. I personally noticed the difference between the original, and I've said that before in this council, the original size of the channel versus what we have today. The accumulated has reduced the channel cross-section. The actual bed of the creek has been neglected. It hasn't been dredged, it hasn't been cleared, it hasn't been, so we've got reduction in capacity, which is why the actual floodwater goes outside the creek bed.
The Friends of the Rouge years ago used to always say, we can't touch the log jams, they're not, we can't, you know, do anything to disturb the bottom. And what happens is, we've done, I've done many Ecorse Creek cleanup. A tire or something gets in there, and then it gets covered with, with silt or shopping cart, or we found motorcycles. It never comes out, it's very hard to get out.
Found a mattress, yeah. There are a lot of restrictions in that, no doubt. But we needed to define, so instead of doing large, you know, multimillion dollar, we wanted to define it and focus on what would be an immediate benefit to us to reduce flood potentials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
So Ahmad, you had a question?
You know what, I just wanted to double check. I know last year, we did voice our opinion to the county, but I know they only have 25,000 budget for the maintenance of the creek. Has it, any, are they willing to increase it? Or I know Congresswoman Rashida and the mayor did talk to them, and I'm not sure if they-
Council Chair.
Sir Mayor, go ahead.
So this is one of the discussions we're having with the county and the state and the federal side. They're trying to get, so we have the ARPA money from the state, actually, and also the county. And it's going to be a hell of a lot more than what's allocated. You know, it's going to be in the millions. We're guessing close to $10 million. So this is something that we, we need to get some money from the county and use some of our ARPA money. And also, we're trying to get federal money as well to clean it. And to go back to what Councilman Coniston mentioned, this is not going to be the, on the county level. It's going to be a huge task. You have to put equipment in the creek itself to be able to pick up some of the, as you mentioned, there's tires we found in April when we did the cleanup, I think, four or five shopping carts, new tires. So it's going to be a big, a big task, and it's going to be a big company that actually comes in with excavators that they have to put in the creek to be able to dredge it, make it wider, and also clean up all the dirt, you know, that's blocking the drains going into the creek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see one of the directors online has a comment to make. Mr. Jamal, two minutes, please, go ahead. Now, I know our Zoom meeting audio was not working during the last meeting, so I'm not sure if it got working or not.
Do you hear me right now?
Not ready.
Do you hear me?
Talk, Mr. Jamal, let me see if we can hear you.
Do you hear me now?
Well, only off the computer, but go ahead and make a two-minute comment.
Okay, responding to Councilman Baydoun regarding what the administration did, you know, regarding the Ecorse Creek. Currently, we have six NOIs, notice of intent, at the FEMA Michigan State Police. And tomorrow, we are putting actually the draft for few million dollars to do studies, actual studies, to actually make sure we will apply later on next year for probably millions of dollars to address the creek, you know, issue through detention and retention plans. What's Mr. Deeb right now, PED, professional engineer Deeb, is requesting you to be planned and understanding? He is requesting to do a survey by using a drone, then analyze where we have blockage in the creek for maintenance purpose, and also to help us in the future, you know, to conduct this scoping. Thank you. I support this particular one because it's going to help us in the future. But the creek is in our heart. We are working on the creek actions. You can see, the creek's going to be taken care of. The Ecorse Commission have all this information. Anytime the council wanted a study session with the Ecorse Creek Commission, you can have it, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal.
If I may, Chair-
Oh, Mr. Deeb, go ahead.
This is, there are, we're taking two approaches, the short-term and the long-term approach. As Mr. Jamal has indicated, the projects under capital funding that we're looking at, the capital, the large capital project, the ones that we are applying pre-application for tomorrow under FEMA, will address the large, the retention, detention basin, the larger issue. But between now and that time, based on what Councilman Baydoun had said the last couple of times, I believe, so what happened if we have another flood in June of '22? What we want it to be, we want it to be ready. We do have short-term targets, things that we can do in the short term to alleviate the potential floods. And that we're also keeping track of the large capital, you know, multimillion dollar projects. So it's short-
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, next item.
Council Chair.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion items on this? You had a question?
Yes, I do. This might be for Director Deeb also. You know, being a lifelong South Ender, we've heard the, this colony- You know, being a lifelong South Ender, we've heard the, this county and the city is doing studies for the last 50 years. And we just wanna make sure that we're just not getting thrown a bone on this deal. This surveillance drone, is it gonna actually go, I mean, blockage, you know, finding blockage, that's no big deal. I mean, you can, you can look at it from the street, I mean, the log jam, I mean, that's not the problem, right? The problem is different. Is this drone gonna go just right over the top? Is it gonna stop and do both sides of the bridges? I mean, in your bid specifications, is it gonna be elaborate drone surveillance? Or is it just gonna be a courtesy flyover?
Two things. One is a flyover to identify, so we've had, I just became aware that a few years back, the city had done an actual boots-on-the-ground survey of all the outlets of the, within the city of Dearborn Heights, from west to east. So we're taking that into account and wanted to find the conditions between '17, '18, and '22. I know, I've visited them, I crossed every bridge, and I can, I took pictures, and I know we have, we have blockage, which is the main reason why the water can't flow into it, because the pipe is under silt. So the survey is intended to do two things. The flyover to identify the red hot spots, you know, where we need to do, and then concentrate on those spots to define what the issues are so we can put a plan to fix it. This is not, it's not a study, it's an actual working survey. And anytime, anytime you do a construction project, you start with an assessment, an actual survey, to define what the work is, and that's what we're doing. We're just simply defining what we need to get done.
Okay, well, you mentioned the inlet pipes that come from the storm drains on the streets.
Yes, sir.
It goes into the creek, and there's been so much sediment built up that normally the pipe would be up here in the bottom here, and the water flowing, but the bottom's up to like halfway.
We have pipes that are completely.
The pipes glogged up.
Yeah.
Is that, is that something that's gonna be addressed?
Yes, yes. We have pipes that are 80, 90% submerged.
Right.
Totally submerged. So as a result, when they're under sedimentation, the flow from the street just backs up.
Is that something that the mayor was referring to when he said bring equipment into the creek? And take care of that, because I think that's a major problem.
Yeah, yes. So when we define the five and a half miles, define the areas that we need to concentrate, the construction contract, or if we come up with a deal with Wayne County, we'll concentrate on these locations and say, this is what needs to get done. There isn't enough money to do the hundred and some million dollars that the Corps of Engineers indicated way back when. We want it to get something that is more affordable, that we can, that we can immediately feel the results, and that's, that's the way to do it.
Well, good, you guys are doing a good job on that. I mean, it's actually doing something instead of our lip service, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Councilman Wensel. Any other discussions on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8A, city car lease under reports from mayor.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve a two-year lease for a city car for the mayor to use while attending city events and meetings in an amount not to exceed $500 per month, as outlined in 8-8.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussions on this? Councilman Muscat.
I believe this question will be directed at the mayor. Mr. Mayor, we previously went through an ordeal of getting vehicles marked, and we had a long argument about that until it finally became provisioned and it happened. Are any of these cars going to have at least a tracker on there so we? A lot of these lease vehicles, we should know where they're at in the mileage used, because, you know, city council approves all the budgets, but yet we've never seen cars, the maintenance, we see the maintenance request, but we don't see miles driven, gas usage, credit card for gases. We never see any of that. And I would like to know if any of these cars are gonna be tracked now.
Councilor Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So this is something that we're doing, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, we're doing an audit on the entire city, every department. And one of the things, I mean, even my office is being audited, obviously, you know, that's why we're requested Plan Moran, you know, we have that on the agenda. We're looking at everything, all the financials, all the documentations, the processes. So every department's gonna go through the same process. We're looking at every, everything that, you know, just to be transparent and, you know, be accountable. So we will be looking at that, Council, Chair, program.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Has anyone looked into the possibility of maybe getting a consignment vehicle, like say, from one of the automobile companies for testing? That we could use, or, you know, we could use for them while collecting data for the company, and it would be at no expense to us?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, have, you know, like, for years, the city of Dearborn was given test vehicles from Ford Motor Company to drive, and it didn't cost Dearborn anything but, but a few dollars, really. And yet Ford was able to collect data from that, those vehicles as a test bed. Well, maybe we can do something like that to save us some money also, if anybody could look into that.
So Dearborn is a different situation, obviously, with Ford Motor Company.
Yeah, home of Henry Ford.
So they allowed that to happen. I remember many, many years ago when they had the Lincoln Continentals, you know, they provided the police.
For $1.
Yeah. Over a dozen vehicles, and that's what they did. And so one of the things, I actually discussed that with a friend of mine that still works for Ford there in marketing, trying to see what they can do, you know, for Dearborn Heights, you know, so they can share, you know, some of the things that are going on in Dearborn, with Dearborn Heights, since Dearborn Heights has a lot of residents who are Ford Motor Company employees. So I did put the question out there to see if I can get somebody to, see if we can get some vehicles, not just so much to, just for tracking or for, to see, it's called road load data. That's, that's what they do, that they give it to different departments or different agencies, and they try to get road load, road load data, see what, what each entity is doing, or like say, usage for the police, you know, for long idle, you know, the, you know, for like high speeds, those sort of things. So they do have that, but at this point, you know, Dearborn Heights has not offered that option. And even Dearborn has not offered that option at this point, but they do give discounts. Or sometimes they just give cars to the city of Dearborn because they don't want police officers driving non-Ford vehicles, especially at Ford land.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman. Any other discussions on this?
I got a quick.
Councilman, go ahead.
I am just gonna kind of, I know you've said this in the last couple of meetings, have we ever just thought about buying a car and then, you know, being able to drive it for X amount of years? And I get it, it comes with service, but if we're buying a brand-new car, I don't know how much we're gonna spend in service over seven years. You can go back, sell the vehicle, so that you can at least be able to recoup some of your money, that's first. Second, I know the former light mayor had a vehicle, what did we do with that vehicle?
Okay, this is the second question, the vehicle went back to the police department.
Okay. It was converted?
Yeah, it was.
It was converted into something?
So that did go back to the police department. And purchasing a vehicle at this point, because of budget, we didn't have really budget, you know, to purchase a vehicle, so that's why we put the lease for the time being. We can revisit that in two years.
Okay.
Once we go through.
And then, do we know which type of car we're gonna be purchasing?
Well, we're gonna go out for, bet the cheapest one we can find.
Nice, because I'm looking for one too, so. By the way, there's no leases out there.
So, but if you, if you look at this, Councilman, what they did is, the way it's worded is not to exceed $500 per month. So no matter what, it's capped at 500, but if there's one found for 300, that would not be a problem. Okay, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Ahmad.
I have a question about the insurance. Is all city vehicles under one umbrella insurance? That's how it works?
It's MMR, so they, MMR actually has the insurance for everything, buildings. Anything within the city is, is insured through MMR, especially vehicles.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any other discussions on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8B under reports from mayor. And this is for the Downriver Utility Water, I'm sorry, Wastewater Authority, otherwise known as DUA, Board of Directors Appointment and Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, DUA Technical Committee Appointments.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City concur with the mayoral appointments of Mayor Bazey as the city's primary representative for the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, Board of Directors, and City Engineer Ali Deeb as the alternate. In addition, concur with the mayoral appointments of City Engineer Ali Deeb as the city's primary representative for the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority Technical Committee and DPW Director Robert Conrad as the alternate, as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussions on this item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8C, Tax Increment Finance Authority, otherwise known as TIFA, and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Reappointments and Appointment.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral reappointments of Mr. Tim Emery, whose term will expire January 2025. Mr. Don Killian and Ms. Eleanor Gannick, terms to expire January 2024 to both the Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. In addition, concur with the mayoral appointment of Hussein?
Hujaj.
Say it one more time.
Hujaj.
Ju-Haj.
Close enough.
I apologize.
Hujaj.
To both Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, term to expire January 2024, to replace Ms. Rose Tripepe, as outlined in 8C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on this item?
Councilor Chair? Those terms expire December of the respective year, as the mayor had mentioned.
Okay, so December 2024, you mean?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so there's a typo on here, so Councilman, can you just do an addendum? And I'm sorry, an amendment to your motion, instead of January 2024, it's gonna be December 2024.
December 31st or January 1st. It's, I, so amended.
Well, I, we can have both, so pick one, December 31st.
December 31st.
2024, madam clerk, is that enough?
That's good.
Is that one on Dana?
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
No, it wasn't, that's how it was submitted.
Another discussion item on this, so as with any appointments, I always like to know personally, with the new appointments at least, Mr. Mayor, what, either the qualifications, reasoning, whatever it is, as far as who the appointments are, before we go ahead and approve them. At the end of the day, it is an appointment, obviously, by you, but we have to approve those appointments. So with that being the case, of any of the new members on this particular board, the reasoning behind their appointments, please.
So the only, Councilor Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
The only new appointee is Mr. Hujaj. He's an attorney, so he was really in real estate, so he was interested in serving under TIFA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion items?
Did he say he's in real estate?
Attorney.
Real estate attorney.
The real estate attorney?
No, he does real estate, so he's an attorney. I mean, he does commercial properties and he's commercial.
So real estate attorney?
Yeah.
Okay. Not a real estate agent, real estate attorney. Any other questions, any other discussion items? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8D, this is a Community and Cultural Relations Commission Appointment.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Mrs. Mesa Abdullah to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, term to expire November of 2023. The appointment is to replace Mercedes Zimbowicz, who recently resigned from the commission, as outlined in 8D.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussions?
Councilor Chair?
Okay, Councilman Baydun and Councilman Muscat.
So I listened to Rachel LaPointe, I read it, I know, you know, Mr. Constant couldn't finish it. But I read both of them, both Mesa and Rachel are amazing. Everybody on the Cultural Relations Commission is amazing. And if I needed to go ahead and move over to where I don't have the voting rights to get them both on, I would love that because it's better the Cultural Relations Commission, so I would be more than willing to do that. But I also just wanna be clear, I've had the conversation with Corporation Miyaki, where I was allowed to be on both the city council and the commission. And through the lines, I believe, corporation council, I don't know if you remember that conversation, when I first got on about a year ago, you told me that as long as I'm not being paid, you looked into it and that it was fine that I can serve on both.
I believe that that was what my opinion was.
Council, you wanna get closer to the microphone? Because on Zoom, they're not able to hear us that well. So always get it as close as possible.
Okay, I believe that was what my opinion was, because we talked about the particular charter provision and the fact that it requires that you cannot receive compensation.
Correct.
And since it's an uncompensated position, you would be able to continue to serve.
Okay, so I will be more than willing to step aside, and so that I don't have a vote, I believe you're on there as well, where you can vote as well.
Yeah, I'm not a voting member. But just in case, Councilor Miyaki, I'm not sure if he's aware of what you're referencing, because we had that discussion in the beginning, I'm not sure if he.
He does, I had the conversation with him a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I've had that conversation with him a year ago prior to this.
I'm talking about the suggestion that the mayor made, which was earlier. I'm not sure if Gary Miyaki heard the mayor's suggestion at the time. Do you know what, do you know what he's referencing?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you wanna tell him what you were referencing?
So we had Councilman Baydun, he was a voting member, so we wanted to see.
Wait, can I get closer to the microphone, Mayor?
Change him into an ex-official.
Okay, is the spot open, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, then that could end up being done, you could resign as the, in your current position, and then the mayor could point you to a different position at the next meeting.
Yes, that's what I was gonna recommend, go at the next meeting, Councilor Chair.
And then council can approve of Rachel LaPointe the following week?
We still have to interview, so I did talk to the chairwoman. So there's gotta be an interview process for that next one.
Okay, but I just wanna be clear that I don't have to resign unless I'm willing to resign, is that correct?
Well, we can discuss this offline. I mean, right now, we still have to, we have to talk about, you have to send in your resignation. So obviously, we can't do it at this meeting, we still have to go to the next meeting.
I know, what I'm asking is, is the corporation council is.
You mean, could you resign?
Yeah.
At the next?
It's not because of the charter or any, any reason for that matter.
My recollection is that you are correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ahmad? I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat was second, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, please, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Chair. Earlier, we, we had the letter from Ms. LaPointe.
Yeah.
And I believe the, our clerk mentioned something about having the mayor's appointees and two of them being the council appointees. Now, Sadi Zimbowicz, how do you pronounce her last name?
That's correct.
Was she a council appointee?
She was, she is a council appointee, yes.
This should have been a council appointee also.
Correct.
So, you know, to make things fair, I believe we should, we should, you know, I would want to send this back to the administration so we can do everything in one shot and make this right. Because I think this is a council appointment, and we should keep it that way.
Let me ask you, can I resign on the spot now so that we can move forward and give me CDA? Or would you like an actual formal letter?
We can do it at the next meeting, Councilor Chair.
Okay, so let's go ahead and table this one, then, this drawing.
Well, I, you know, if whoever made the motion can refer it back to the administration, amend her, to make, you know.
I refer 8D back to the administration.
Okay. Any other discussion items?
Yeah, Councilor Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
This question probably for the mayor or the maybe corp counsel. So does every commission or board in the city has the same rules on regulation? Or each commission has different? Because I received the same letter from Mrs. LaPointe, and she was suggesting that the commission has a say on the appointment.
Well, Councilor Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So this is something we talked about, you know, a while back, but we have to revisit that, because I'm getting contact by other commissioners, and they're asking me, how come you doing this with this commission? We're not doing this. So I have to revisit that process to go back to how every commission should be done. So this is something I'm gonna be putting out here in the next probably couple of weeks. So we have to make sure that we're consistent with every commission.
Mayor, whatever it is to make things easier, I'm willing to do.
So that's what we're gonna be doing, is starting at next meeting, you know, with, I mean, starting right now, is the next commission has to go through the proper procedures, you know, with the mayor's appointment or council appointment, without having people within the same commission bringing their own people in. And this is gonna be a big problem, like say, for example, if you go to the planning commission and everybody brings in their own people, then they can sway votes, you know, at the commission. So they have to be independent.
So Mayor, can, can we post those vacancies on the website, and so everybody can see them and apply for them?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
If that's okay.
Yes, please.
The clerk's offices, we send out for, before the annual publication notice, a list of boards and commissions, to all the boards and commissions, for them to review it. Um, we just completed that, we will be sending the council members a complete list of the council, and it will tell you where there's a vacancy, who makes that appointment, and who concurs with it. Um, each commission, I believe, has an ordinance, those are available online, but on the top of that commission, it'll tell you how many members are part of that on the roster, and who appoints them.
Yeah, I've, I've seen that one.
Who's a voting member, if there's an exception.
Is it hard to post them on the website, and people maybe can apply?
Council Chair.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
So, on the city website, you can, you can go to, uh, there's a, there's a tab that says commission, and you can click on that, and it'll give you all the commissions in the city, active commissions, and, uh, I just wanna bring up also, if you, if any, any of the residents, uh, is interested in being on a commission, you know, you can reach out to myself or Ms. Sinia, and, uh, like I said, we'll, we'll review the process and make sure that we, uh, um, make sure that they qualify for that commission, and we could just take, uh, action on that. But if, if any resident is interested in any commission, you can reach out to, to my office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, and just so everyone understands.
Bring, bring the microphone closer.
There are Merrill appointments, and there are city council appointments, and if people are interested in a particular commission, let's say the Watershed Stewards Commission, they, if they apply or have an interest, they might send that, indicate that to the mayor's office, and then also copy all the city council, so we can be aware.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion items on this? Okay, so at this particular point, just to be clear, we are tabling it, is that correct? Or, or, cause you made the motion.
Refer to that Tim.
Refer it back to the administration, is that correct? Okay?
Give me a second.
Okay, so the one I made the motion was, uh, Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman, uh, Ahmad.
I can second this one.
It was Muscat, who did it?
It was Muscat?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any other further discussions on this? Councilman Wenzel.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, the mayor referred to, uh, um, having people contact the office, uh, if they're interested in a commission, and I, I can't help but, uh, bring this up, um, seems like the last few appointments, and several of them, have been real estate people, and, and, nothing against the real estate people, I'm sure these people are fine candidates, but I think we should just, you know, start going out and looking, you know, I, I was a construction worker my whole life, let's, let's start picking up a couple of construction workers the next couple of commissions. I mean, just, and there is a lot of real estate people, sitting up here, even, you know, and I just think we should get a, real estate people have, uh, uh, not a one-track mind, but a, a mindset to sell real estate, and I think we need different opinions than just, uh, real estate, uh, opinions, and, uh, make it more diverse.
All right, well, obviously, it's, it's, it's open to all, and at the end of the day, it's the mayor's appointment, and we approve them, or disapprove them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
But this one was a council appointment, correct?
Yes.
This one is the one that has been, we've been going back and forth and debating on this, but yes, it is a council appointment. So, at this particular point, this motion's made, now, I'm sorry, uh, one quick question, uh, Counselor Gary Miyaki, in my particular case, I'm on that commission, but not as a voting member, so should I recuse myself from this particular vote, or is it okay to vote on it, myself?
It's okay for you to vote on it, you're actually expected to vote unless you have a direct pecuniary interest in it.
No, no, no financial interest, but just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Then you can vote.
So all in favor? All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, we have Councilwoman Dalla, yes, Councilwoman Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bedun?
Nay.
Oh, uh, Councilwoman Breyer?
Yes.
Councilman Constant?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, we have, uh, six yeses and one nays. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8E, Proposed Engagement Letter on Professional Services Agreement with Plant Moran.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve, uh, the Temporary Finance System Addendum to Plant Moran, P L L C Engagement Letter, and in addition, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, subject to the appropriate, appropriate addendum as approved by Corporation Council, as outlined in 8E.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat? I'm sorry?
Council Chair, if I wanted to continue.
Oh, okay. You said support, okay.
I'm sorry, uh, this was done two weeks ago, and we referred it back to the administration, because there was a few things that our, uh, Corporation Council did not like.
Wait, Councilman, if I may interrupt you, so why don't we, once you're done with the motion, we'll see who's seconding it, and then we'll go into the discussion, if you don't mind. Okay, so, motion made by Councilman Muscat, are you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, support and seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on this? Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
Uh, again, this was brought to us two weeks ago, uh, we sent it back to the Corporation Council, uh, to look at the contract, I believe that.
Council Chair brought them? I'm sorry, just corrections, it, it was actually approved pending.
Yes, approved pending, and, and I believe it was set back, and the Corporation Council has done a few, done his homework, and if we don't mind, let the Corporation Council tell us what he came up with.
Yes, that's fine, absolutely, but before we do, was there any other council, or was there any other discussion item on this?
No, I, I wanted to hear what, uh.
Okay, Counselor Gary Miyaki, go ahead.
Um, actually, uh, the reason this is coming back, I'm sorry, the reason this is coming back to you is because I did not approve the final version that Plant Moran was willing to sign off on. Uh, I proposed an addendum, it did not get rid of some language, it included what I considered to be mandatory, but it did not get rid of the indemnification, hold harmless language, so, uh, my advice to the mayor was to bring it back to the council, and if the council feels comfortable, assuming the business risk associated with this, then the council could end up, uh, voting in favor, uh, of this second addendum. But, um, but otherwise, there would be no need for your vote, I would have just approved it, and it would have ended up being fine. Um, so that's, that's what's happened.
Okay, so there's a clause that Plant Moran cannot get rid of, and, and, uh, the gentleman, Brian, mentioned during our last meeting, just before this one, uh, that their attorneys did not recommend that we cross that off of the contract. Can you give us a little bit more information on that? Because I, I, I wanna make sure if we're gonna be approving this, you're saying you're not comfortable with it, but then that makes me, at least, me personally, not as a body, but me personally, not comfortable approving it now. So can you give us a little bit more information on that, as far as, because this particular item, for those in the audience, um, had to be walked on by the mayor, because of the time sensitivity of this, where it, it does have to get started pretty quickly. At the time we voted on this, a couple of weeks ago, this was pretty much a done situation, until this just came up. So can you give us a little bit more information on this, since a lot of our council members did not get the opportunity to get the information in, in a timely manner?
Yes, the, um, the two provisions that I have concerns about are paragraph 12, exclusion of certain damages, and paragraph 18, uh, defense and demarcation and hold harmless. Uh, effectively, the, um, the exclusion of certain damages would keep, uh, Plant Moran from having liability to the city, uh, except in cases of gross negligence or willful misconduct. Um, that would not include ordinary negligence. And then, they suggested, well, we have, uh, liability insurance, and it's like, well, we have liability insurance, but the liability insurance, the obligation for that to cover the city, would not end up springing into action if this language is in the agreement. So, in other words, it's kind of like saying, well, we have insurance, and it's like, well, then, why not allow us to recover perhaps up to the amount of the policy limits, which is what I suggested as a, as a possible, um, a, a possible way to address my concerns. Uh, the defense and demarcation and hold harmless, again, only would apply if Plant Moran, uh, is involved in willful misconduct or gross negligence, it would not include ordinary negligence. So, someone causes someone to get hurt over at a city building while they're working over there, then it wouldn't end up covering, uh, covering it. Now, the likelihood of that, you know, they've been sometimes working over during the audit, you know, it's not like they're, they're doing, you know, driving cars for the city or something like that, but, you know, my personal feeling is that I wouldn't be comfortable making that decision for the city. I think that's a, the decision that, uh, your honorable body and the mayor should end up making, if you're gonna make it. It's not like, some of these are like low-risk contracts with like $8,000 that we're paying in a very minimal risk. I'll look at some of this language and say, this is, this shouldn't end up being a problem, it's a unique service that we're being provided. This, we're gonna have city, or we're gonna have Plant Moran employees actually at, uh, City Hall on an ongoing basis, um, I consider it to be kind of moderate risk, and that's my concern, but, you know, as I said, it's, it's really up to you and the mayor in terms of, you know, whether or not you feel comfortable, uh, with that, and, uh, I just don't think that it's a, an appropriate thing as Corp. Counsel to end up making that kind of decision for the city, when I think the, the amount of risk is more than, you know, minimal.
Okay. Council Chair. Let me have Councilman Constant, go ahead.
Uh, Corporation Counsel Gary Miyaki, so, I mean, this is a half-million-dollar contract, that Plant Moran, they just refused to modify that paragraph, that, that clause in any way.
Those two paragraphs, that is correct.
They put in the, um, is it Title VI language that, you know?
They were willing to put in language having to do with Title VI, the appendix, as well as the mandatory Persons with Disabilities Civil Rights Act language, and the mandatory Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act language, um, but they were not willing to change, uh, the indemnification language and the exclusion of certain damages, uh, language.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel.
Yes, uh, Mr. Miyaki, what, what would happen in the event that, uh, a Plant Moran employee, uh, working for us in this, uh, in this manner, uh, was, uh, on, on the clock, and he's in the parking lot, and he backed into a resident walking, and heard a resident, uh, who would be liable in that situation, in, uh, with the current contract?
Arguably, uh, the city would have to indemnify them. Um, it, you know, it's.
What does that mean?
It, it means that the city would end up having to cover the loss.
And?
And would have to provide a defense to the individual.
But they're not working for the city.
Is that Councilman?
Yes, I am.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Councilman Bedun, go ahead.
So, so the chances of somebody potentially getting injured is, I know, like, uh, with, uh, Mr. Constant, uh, Councilman Constant said, is probably one in 1,000, but it's a potential that it could happen. I know that the mayor said he was comfortable with, hey, like, listen, and I know a lot of Plant Moran's employees said they would rarely be here, but when they are there, it does become a liability on the city, is what you're saying?
Yes, and, and again, remember, I'm looking at this as an attorney, you know, I deal with those worst-case scenarios. We had an issue with a catastrophic claim a number of years ago on Beach Daily, uh, the county, despite the fact that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as MMR Ma Council were concerned, um, had indemnification language in their permit, uh, there's case law that says that's not even something that ends up applying, but nonetheless, we ended up having, county insisting that they were entitled to be, entitled to be completely indemnified by us, and, you know, that results in a lot of, a lot of claims. So, you know, from my perspective, I'm an attorney, perhaps I'm overly conservative on this type of issue, that's why I say, you know, this is something that I think, you know, you might sit there and look and say, Mr. Miyaki, you're being far, far too conservative about this, and it's a business judgment for this body to end up making, um, but I, in good conscience, don't feel that I could.
Just got one more thing.
You know, say, yeah, go ahead, it's not a problem.
I just have one more thing.
Go ahead.
And I just wanna just make it clear to the residents at home and to the audience that, you know, we had this meeting, and we said, this is crucial, this is something we need in, in our city, um, and I understand where you're coming, coming off conservative on this point, and, and trust me, if there's anybody that I love when it comes to, you know, legality things, it, it, it's, it's your opinion on things, um, but I am also gonna stress to my colleagues, I think that this is something that we need. I think our city has been bleeding for a pretty long time, and I know it's a hard decision that we make, and one of the decisions that we have to do is make hard decisions. Uh, so I think this is something that I'd ask my colleagues to, to not not approve, I would ask you guys to approve this. Um, that's just, that is my opinion, um, and I would hope that, you know, nobody at Plant Moran that's working in there would potentially get injured or injure anybody in the city.
Okay, um, Brian, I'm gonna have you come up, just give us, if you don't mind, a 30-second or one-minute presentation, as far as why Plant Moran is insisting on this change in the contract.
Not making the change.
I'm sorry, not making the change, I'm sorry.
Uh, good evening, so I, I am definitely not an attorney, I'm a CPA. So, uh, I can't speak for my own company's counsel, but, uh, they were adamant that we not, uh, make any change to our agreement, um, but I certainly, uh, respect Mr. Miyaki's opinion and, and understand why he's working in the best interests of the city as well. Um, that is our standard language, um, we work with 70 communities in Michigan every year, and that language is in every one of those agreements. So, uh, we're just, we're not able to make a change to it, it's, it's out of my control. So, we wanna help the city, we'd like to start as quickly as possible, I think it is definitely a remote chance that anything would happen, uh, the example of the, the driver backing into somebody, well, I, God forbid that would happen, but I would think that, that would be more of the motorist, uh, who would be at fault, I, again, not an attorney, can't tell you that for sure.
Okay.
Uh, but, we're accountants, so it would be a heck of a paper cut, it would be stub toe, dropping a computer, I mean, it's, we're, we're just in an office, sitting down in front of a computer.
Council Chair. Thank you, Brian. Okay, this will be the last comment on this.
And Brian, you, you say the other 70 communities, this, do you know that for a fact, or you just believe that?
No, no, I, I am responsible for every engagement letter that it goes out for PM Gap, and I have not changed that for any Michigan, uh, municipality, uh.
But not, not Plant Moran's auditors, Plant Moran is coming in and.
Correct, every, every different service that we have has a different engagement letter, so that is not part of the audit engagement letter, but it is part of ours. Um, but I can say for a fact that any PM Gap, any engagement letter coming out of my department has that, has that, those two paragraphs.
There are 70 communities that suffer from audits?
It's, it's not audit, we, we are the internal accounting people, um, but last year, we had 80 municipalities, 80 clients across the country, the vast majority were in Michigan, 70 is approximate, it might be 68, but it's, every Michigan client has the same engagement letter.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Muscat, last one.
Yes, uh, thank you, Council Chair. Uh, I just wanna, you know, tell the council people here that are newer, uh, that I've
I just want to, you know, tell the council people here that are newer, that I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and long before I was elected as a councilman. And, you know, we heard about all the deficiencies that we had in our audits, year in and year out and year in. I believe this is a step in the right direction to get us out of that deficiency mode all the time. Without their help, I don't think we could, we could do it, but it's going to take us a lot longer. In the long run, it's going to save us money. So that's why I'm so much in favor of this.
So obviously, we do need to mention, we've already agreed as a council body to move forward with this particular direction. The only issue right now at this particular point is whether we're okay with moving forward based on the clause that Counselor Garamiaki is not comfortable with, and the clause that Plant Moran is insisting on. So with that being the case, it's our basically choice.
Council Chair.
Councilman Tom Wenzel.
This is a very important item here, it's a half a million dollar decision we're making here. And I'm just, you know, I respect the mayor and where he's taking this city. I mean, it's, I think this is probably one of the best mayors we've ever had, and he's only been here a short term. And, you know, I'm not sure what the involvement is, you know, with these other departments throughout the city. It is a lot of money, and I've got to make sure. And Gary's got some concerns. I just want, I don't know who, are these going to fall under HR in any way, HR department, these people? And if so, or if not, what is, what's this group or these people coming in, what are they going to do that our new comptroller can't do?
Brian, do you want to start with it, or?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay, so, you know, we lost a deputy comptroller, we haven't had a deputy comptroller, and the new comptroller started on Monday. And there's positions in, they say, for example, the treasurer's office, and there's one position in the comptroller's office, and they kind of overlap. So that's some of the stuff that they're going to help us build that department, the comptroller's office or department, and also come up with procedures, processes, and obviously, we have to bring in a deputy comptroller, and they're going to help us with the process, you know, bringing somebody on and training the new deputy comptroller as well.
Okay. Also, just for disclosure, it's not a half million, it's 400 and-
Or less.
440,000.
Or less.
For sure, 440,000 for sure, and possibly more depending on what other work we want them to do.
But it's not to exceed that number, however.
Not to exceed 440,000.
Caped. Okay. Any other, okay.
I'm sorry, Council Chair, just maybe this is for corp counsel, I know, I agree with my colleague that probably we have to move forward with this, but just to lift the risk from the city, do you think as a contractor, Plant Moran, can we add them to the liability insurance for the city, or that's not an option?
That I don't believe could be done. Usually it has to be city employees and officials. Independent contractors are not covered under MMRMA. So, for example, over the years, there've been times where people have ended up bringing claims against me, like the, you know, kind of, and I've had to potentially defend myself. So in this situation, I don't believe that MMRMA would be able to provide coverage unless the city's coverage was expanded in this particular situation.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. So at this particular point, we're going to go ahead and take it to a vote. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have Councilwoman Breyer.
Yes.
Councilman Constance.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah, yes. Councilman Bedun?
Yes.
Councilman Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Okay, so we have six yeses, one no. Motion carries. At this point, during our last meeting, we had a little bit of a problem with people calling in on Zoom, so while the meeting is still moving, we have no choice but to do this right in the middle of the meeting, unfortunately. So it'd take maybe 30, 40 seconds to have somebody call in, our deputy clerk call in from outside into the Zoom meeting, and we're going to see if we're going to be able to hear her, because during our last meeting, the audience could not hear anybody on Zoom, and we had to do it in a Band-Aid way, and it didn't work too well.
Testing.
Kathy, are you on?
I think we can hear her.
Testing.
Wait, no, now you went away, one second.
Testing, can you hear me?
Yep.
Testing, one, two, three.
Sounds good to me.
We can hear you.
Very good.
All right, are we good? Kathy, we can hear you.
Can we give a round of applause to Mr. Green?
Can we give him a round of applause to Mr. Green?
Thank you.
Yeah, by the way, Dave Green, although he had this whole thing all set up already, he, we called him, and he came back from home to go ahead and fix this for us. Oh, okay.
Councilman David Abdullah is going to buy those groceries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. And thank you to our deputy clerk Kathy for calling in. All right, so next item on the agenda, we're going to go ahead and move on to reports from city officials. We have item 9A, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Michigan Humane Society Agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the animal sheltering agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Michigan Humane Society for housing and care of the Dearborn Heights domestic animals.
Councilman, move up to the mic as much as possible.
Eat the mic.
Eat the microphone, exactly. Again, for all of the council members, keep in mind, online on Zoom, they can't hear you, you sound too muffled, especially when you have a mask on. Including people in the audience, when you come up in the audience, please have the microphone as close as possible. Go ahead.
In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, subject to the approval of Corporation Counsel, as outlined in 9A. Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constance, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, I have a quick question for our Chief of Staff Hernandez. I know we've approved these contacts, contracts on a somewhat of a regular basis, is there, especially for some of the newer council members, is there any major changes or any changes of significance from the last contracts that we've had?
No, it is pretty consistent with the contracts we've had in the past, we're just waiting for, we're just waiting for Corporation Counsel's approval on the contract, just to make sure nothing was sneaked in there, but we believe it's exactly the same as the previous years.
Beautiful. Thank you, Chief of Staff Hernandez. And again, I just want to remind, like Chief of Staff Hernandez just mentioned, this particular approval, when we vote on it, if we approve it or disapprove it, but if we approved it, it'd be subject to final approval by our Corporation Counsel, so Gary Miaki will be looking over the contract for final approval. Okay, any other discussion items on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I have another question for our Chief of Staff. Chief of Staff?
Chief of Staff Hernandez?
Yes.
Chief of Staff. This contract or this agreement, there's several things in there, who has the authority to proceed with any of these things on this list here?
The ordinance department, which is animal control as well, correct.
Is anybody in the ordinance department, or just the director, or who?
The ordinance officers and the department head as well, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, council members? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take this to a vote. All in favor of item 9A, please state aye.
Aye.
Sorry, let me go back, apologize. Motion made by Councilman Constance, supported by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9B, CEDD Director Hassan Jamal, change order number one for Berwin Center, senior center kitchen renovation project.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Berwin Center kitchen renovation project, change order number one in the amount of $17,802.75. This will change the original award bid to hit construction from $61,074 to $78,876.75. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment in the amount not to exceed $78,876,75 as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Mus, I'm sorry, Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussions on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Is this money coming from CDBG, or is this coming from the recreation fund?
So it looks like we're renovating the CDBG, and it looks like it's coming from the outlay, from what I read.
Mr. Jamal is on the, he can answer that question.
Okay, Mr. Jamal, go ahead. Ma'am clerk, can you let him on?
We had our recreation director here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, it's CDBG money.
Okay, thank you, makes a difference.
Any other questions on that, Councilman?
Yes.
And I just wanted, I just wanted the residents to know, and I know this was in our packet,
that the reason why the increase of the 17,000 was due to COVID, and I'm sure many people know the increase of, you know, pricing in wood and material and labor, you know, due to, this is what we ran into. So I completely understand, thank you for bringing it back to us, I appreciate you guys bringing this back to us, and I just wanted to have that clarification, so the residents knew why we went up that extra $17,000.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council members? Go ahead, Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Councilman Bedun mentioned this is because of COVID, I mean, once you have a contract, aren't you held liable to that contract even though prices increase? I mean, if that's the case, is it merely because of COVID that it's a $17,000 or whatever it is increase, or is it some extra things that were added on?
That's a question for-
It was because of the increase of the materials and supplies and the cost of labor. What he's referring to with COVID is everybody's having a hard time getting staff, so they've had to pay their labor workers more money per hour. So that's where the additional costs are coming in. There's a couple of small things that have been added in that weren't included in the original bid, but mostly it's the increase in material supply, labor, plumbers, things like that.
Did we have a contract with them already?
Yes, we did.
And is that, Corporation Counsel, is that standard procedure, what the contract's signed if prices go up? Was that in the contract?
The contract and the bid was a year and a half ago, so that's what the problem was. It was basically outdated.
So basically, it seems then the contract is out of date, we're having a brand-new contract.
Well, the contract was still valid, it was just, when it went out for bid, it was a year and a half ago, so those prices were based on that time when we went out to bid.
Is this kind of just like a courtesy thing to be a nice guy on this deal, you know, because understanding the situation?
You mean the increase, a courtesy thing?
Yeah, letting them increase the original contract because of COVID.
No, it wasn't a courtesy thing. He, the contractor, I spoke to the contractor myself, and he said that he could not complete the project on what he bid, because the figures that he bid for were in, I believe it was like 2020, and with COVID, everything went way up.
All right, thanks, thanks.
So Director, if I may ask a question, then, is there a reason as to why it took a year and a half then?
I was appointed in February of this year, so, I mean, of '20, I mean, so, I mean, the contract was originally taken out with the previous administrator, and it went out to bid with the previous administration.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Director, so how far is the, before the project is done?
They're actually working on it right now, and hopefully, it should be done within a month or so. They've had to tear apart the floor, they're right now replacing the floor and putting the new flooring in, finishing the plumbing. I think they're getting close to the end, but they had to dig into the kitchen floor as well, because they're replacing the grease trap.
So do you expect any more changes, or this is, that's it? I mean, are they going to come back and say there's more prices are up and they need more money?
No, he said that was it.
Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing, I believe Councilman Muscat said that this is CDBG money, this isn't actually coming from our outlay, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and vote on item 9B, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9C, CEDD Director Jamal, CDBG fiscal year 2019, Eaton Center improvements, restrooms project.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign four copies of the contract for the CDBG FY 2019 Eaton Center Improvement Restroom Project on behalf of the city, as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Bedun, is there any discussions on this item? Council Chair. Councilman Bedun, go ahead.
Sorry about that, you know, Councilman Protem can go first.
Okay.
Age before beauty, go ahead.
You got that right. My understanding is there's a problem with the bathrooms at Eaton, and they're not to code.
Wait, Councilman, bring up the microphone.
I'm sorry. The bathrooms aren't up to code, and the work had already been completed, am I correct?
That is not the case, there was an issue in the way that they did it. It was, you're talking about the vacuum breakers, I think they're called, or vacuum something? Anyway, they were done a different way, so they had to correct that. And we had the plumbing inspector come in, look at it, the contractor and the plumbing inspector decided which way to go. It was repaired and taken care of on last Friday. So the toilets are running now, but it was an issue in how they did it. It was done, but they changed it up and fixed it.
I was under the impression that it was still out of code, and I was going to ask our Corporation Counsel to kind of hold somebody-
That's, there's been a lot of rumors everywhere, they just didn't do it exactly the way that certain people thought it should be done.
The certain people being our inspectors?
No, our DPW workers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Bedun, go ahead.
Oh my God, you know what? Don't worry about it. I was dazed and I was, my question was, are these bathrooms finished? But he answered my question, so they are finished.
They are. There's just a couple things that need to be done, but the supplies that we've ordered for the bathrooms are not in yet. We're supposed to be getting some new toilet paper rolls, we are also waiting for the mirrors, which just came in, new grab bars, and pulls for emergency, in case somebody passes out in the restroom. But they are in full operation, and both of them are working.
So they are in full operation?
Yes, they just don't have a mirror, and we have everything sitting out for people to use.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Okay, item, Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Are these restrooms fall into the category of ADA compliance?
They are not, because the doorways are not wide enough for a wheelchair. We do have ADA, an ADA bathroom at the Eaton Center, but it's off the library, and that was made a few years ago with CDBG money.
And that one's in good working order?
That's one, yeah, that's probably the newest bathroom in the whole building, outside of these now.
All right, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take this to a vote. This is item 9C, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9D. Let me show the right one here, yep. And this one's from Fire Chief Brogan, payment of fire engine.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the necessary warrants for the payment of the new fire engine in the amount of $658,897, and authorize the treasurer to issue the payment from the capital outlay account 101 335 981 dot zero zero zero, as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Ahmad, is there any discussion on this?
Council Chair.
Councilman, Council Chair Protem Muscat.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just to let everybody know, I did contact Chief Brogan about the, looking at the invoice for this, because we didn't have it here. He did send it to me via email and everything, all the numbers are exactly correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussions on this? Councilman Wenzel.
Is Chief Brogan on?
He's online, he's on Zoom.
Chief?
Wait, hold on one second, Councilman. Chief Dave Brogan, if you could hear me, if you could unmute yourself, number one.
I got to find him. Oh, there he is.
Okay, now you're unmuted, go ahead, say test 123, because we're not sure if the Zoom is working.
Test 123.
We're good, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Chief. The $658,000, is that the entire price of the fire engine? And is that with everything we need for it, all equipped in markings and everything?
Yeah, that's the entire price for the truck, there could be a couple other, I think the radio's all set, that would be the other big expense, but yeah, that's the price 100% for the entire truck. And then it's going to get here, we've got to still mount tools and everything to that, but the truck is pretty much ready to be picked up, and all of our other paperwork was done, we just didn't have the final step, the permission to actually write, for the treasurer to actually write the check.
Okay, so it's ready to use, it doesn't have to be modified in any way or updated or anything like that?
It won't go in service until we have to mount, we have to mount the tools, and there's going to be some more, the last steps, once we get the truck in our position, that, but we're talking maybe at the most a month or two to get everything, and if there's any differences, we have to get everyone trained on any, like slight differences in differences in the, in the performance of the truck. But it's very, very, very similar to the last truck that we got, so it should go pretty quickly.
All right, thanks, Chief. I want to tell you, you guys are doing a great job over there at the fire department.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other discussion items on item 9D? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take this to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9E from Police Chief Myers, purchase and payment of munition supplies.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of munition supplies for patrol operations and training purposes in the amount of $13,026.30. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign a warrant and the treasurer to issue payment from police ammunition account 101-300-744.000 as outlined in 9E.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussions on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, and this will be the last item on the agenda, item 9F. Last item on the agenda, I'm talking about in terms of reports. Police Chief Myers, change order for video intercom replacement at the Justice Center.
Council Chair?
Councilman, Council Chair Protem Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the change order in the amount of $1,888.53 for the DA Central to complete the video intercom replacement at the Justice Center. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in 9F.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussions on this? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item 9G. I apologize, I missed 9G here. This is from Treasurer Hicks Clayton, City of Depositories, update bank documents.
Council Chair?
Councilman, Council Chair Protem Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor Bill Bazey, city clerk Lynn Marie Zufft-Siena, comptroller Deanne Irby, and treasurer Lisa Hicks to sign all necessary documentation with the City of Dearborn Heights financial institutions to act as depositories of funds as JP Morgan Chase Bank, Comerica Bank, Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, Flagstar Bank, and Morgan Stanley. This request is made, being made per resolution as outlined in 9G.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by? Councilwoman Nancy Breyer. Any discussions on this?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
Nope.
I'm sorry, Constant.
So the actual, the actual motion was, it's not in the council packet? I understand it was emailed yesterday. Was this a late add-on?
This was a late add-on approved by Council Chair Protem Ray Muscat.
Thank you.
And this was necessary in order to make a change with one additional signee, the new comptroller, Deanne Irby.
Take off Mr. Kawhi.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the reason, by the way, somebody had asked, why is, why are all the names being repeated? All of those, with the exception of the new comptroller, were already on there, but the motion as a part of the bank's guidelines has to include all the names all over again. Any other questions on item 9G?
I didn't know Lynn's middle name was Marie, so.
So, okay. Councilman Baydun always throws me off. Okay, so all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. There are no, item 10, no petitions from citizens, no new ordinances and resolutions, and item 12, no communications, item 13, no new business. At this point, we're going to go to comments from council members. Before we begin, a couple of items I want to state in regards to a direction that we're going to continue to look at as a council body. First of all, I just wanted to let the audience know and our council members know that we're working with our clerk and our mayor, mayor's administration on making closed sessions either before, right before regular council meetings, or way at the end of the regular council meetings, or possibly have a special closed sessions on two, on off days, primarily because I've always felt that the audience, whether here or on Zoom, should not have to wait, not knowing how long a closed session's going to take, and meanwhile, they're sitting here for 20 minutes, half hour, hour, hour and a half while we are in a closed session. So it will still be, of course, announced, but they will be done in a way where it would not be an impediment on the, on the audience, just so that you know. Second thing, this is for our administration. I'd like to ask again, I've asked it before, and I just want to repeat it again, please do everything you can to avoid walk-on items. Everything has to be turned into the city clerk's office by 12 noon on Tuesday. Is that correct? And the reason for that is two things. Number one, I don't want to create an impediment for our clerks, trying to put these packages together and sending them over to our council members. But in addition to that, for a lot of our council members, if, you know, something comes in late and it's added on late, then a lot of our council members don't have an opportunity to be able to research it, make the calls, do what needs to be done. So please, 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 for our administration, I'm going to be extremely strict on this to make sure everything is into the clerks by 12 noon on Tuesday. One more item, on all the current claims, please make sure for all of our directors and our mayor's administration that all three signatures on there are on there. Because I can tell you, I for one, as a council chair, I'm not going to be approving if something doesn't have all three signatures on there from the directors and from the mayor, because we want to make sure you are, the people are working on this every day, that you are in approval of this before we approve it. So I'm just giving you guys a heads up again. And to, one thing I promised the resident, one of the residents that called me and left me a voicemail, I promised her that I would mention this at the council meetings. For all residents, as a common courtesy, and I'm sure a lot of our police officers would agree with this, as a common courtesy to your neighbors, I know it's a public parking spot on the streets and you can park wherever you want, but for a lot of residents, they really appreciate it, that if you have a car that you want to park, that you park in front of your house instead of your neighbor's house, leaving your spot in front of your house open. Yes, it's a pub, it's public parking, you can park whatever you want, but it's just a nice neighborly thing to do, try to park in front of your house instead of your neighbor's house. I promised you I would do that, and I agree with you, by the way, to the resident that left me an anonymous voicemail. And I promised her I would communicate that. And one more thing, I'm going to, we are looking into this as a council chair, and I've already discussed this with our clerk's office, and now to our council and our administration that I am going to be looking into doing meetings called Committee of the Whole, and basically, these will be possibly on Thursdays, we're not sure. We will be looking into it. As a matter of fact, myself and Council Chair Protem Ray Muscat will be going next week to one of the meetings in another sister city here, just to see how that works. And basically, in general, what that would be is a meeting before our Tuesday meeting, we will, we will go through the agenda, negotiate, talk, discuss. It'll be an open meeting, there'll be no voting on this by any council members, but this will get rid of a lot of the stuff ahead of time so that by the time we get to the council meeting, not only have we had discussions on this in an open setting, but in addition to that, we have had an opportunity as council members to look into it further after, after having had such discussion. And the residents now can have two, three, four, five days to be able to have discussions with their council representatives and/or administration so that by the time we get to the council meetings as a council body, we are able to vote in a way where we've heard from the residents, the residents have had the chance to speak, and we've had a chance to be able to discuss it and ask any questions. So just giving you guys a heads up that I am looking into this for us as a body. It may or may not go through, we're not sure. Obviously, the council members of the body will decide, but just giving you guys a heads up. And last, I have a question for the mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, I was out of town on a little mini-vacation with the wife, and before I got on the plane, I got a call from one of the police officers as to a change in the police department. And I see some police officers here, so I'm sure they're here to speak about this. With that being the case, before the public comments section, I would like to know a little bit more information on this as far as, and also for our residents, because I'm sure a lot of residents probably don't even know about this. I found out on Monday afternoon, right before I got on the plane in the evening. So for the residents, if you don't mind, if you could make a comment as far as what the change that was made in the police department, and what your thought process, and why this change was made, if you don't mind. Please, thank you.
Okay, Council Chair?
And please bring the microphone up.
So first, let me, let me say what the commissioner, we added a commissioner to the police department. And again, like I mentioned earlier, we are, I am.
Mr. Mayor, if you could bring the, maybe the microphone closer to you.
Now, if the microphone is down or?
No, no, you got to bring it as close as possible to you.
Okay, so anyway, for the, we added the police commissioner's position to the police department as I mentioned earlier today. Obviously, we have Plam Moran earlier, we approved them to come in and help us with, you know, to do self-audit. And so we are going to every department, so the police department is no different. So we are, we are going to go through every department just to look for efficiencies. So the commissioner's role will be to oversee the leadership of the police department with a general objective to establish department policies and procedures, to ensure department policies and procedures are implemented consistently within and across the department, to identify any areas of improvement and performance efficiencies in the managing of the department resources for both personnel and equipment. So that's, that's, that's pretty much what the role of the new commissioner. And by the way, we, this commissioner, Thomas, is actually, was highly recommended. I did talk to several cities and also state police, and he was highly recommended. And I mean, we're, we're actually lucky to have somebody like him come in and try to help us to be more efficient.
Now, some calls have come in to me, Mr. Mayor, as a chair, and I've been asked as far as, does the mayor have the authority to be able to make this type of an appointment? Or is this something that has to go through the city council?
No, the mayor can make an appointment, you know, up to six months. So we are, you know, it's within the mayor's duties, especially since the mayor's responsible for the safety of the whole city, is to look.
If you don't mind, no comments from the audience.
Exactly, that's one of the reasons we need somebody, if you have no respect for the council and elected officials. So this is some of the stuff that, that we're talking about earlier. That's why we need a commission, just to make sure, what I mentioned earlier, that's the roles. And again, I want to talk about, you know, some of the things that, that I wrote down. You know, as the mayor, I have the duty to protect the interests of our residents. I also have the responsibilities to oversee the well-being of every department, including the police department. There have been various complaints with alarming allegations. There are also personnel matters which I am not liberty to discuss at this time, and I do request the city council to have a closed session at the next meeting, Tuesday, to discuss this. I'm also taking measures to assist our police department leadership in identifying and resolving critical issues to maintain the safety and well-being of our officers and also residents. My purpose is to serve the best interests of our residents. Like all departments in our city, it is imperative that our police department maintains effective leadership and accountability, transparency in documentation and handling of information, adherence to procedures and the law. Fiscal responsibilities, respect, equitable treatment, and safe environment for residents among fellow officers and all department employees. The police department is critical arm of our city, as effective public safety is vital to sustain any municipality or establishment. So again, I do request, I am not going to go any further than this here, and for any further discussion, we do have to go into a closed session to discuss something that's going to lead, might lead into lawsuit or litigation, Council Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other comments from the council members, not on this item as of yet, but just general comments? And I asked this myself personally, only because I had a whole bunch of calls on this, and I thought, you know, I know very little information on it as of yet, so that's why I asked the mayor this, but go ahead. I don't want to have the full discussion on this, is what I'm saying at this particular point, but go ahead with any other comments.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure it's going to be brought up again tonight. First of all, I want to explain why, you know, I voted no on the Plam Moran. I wasn't 100% comfortable, and if I'm not 100% comfortable, I'm going to vote no on something. And secondly, I want to commend our DPW department and director comrade in clearing the snow and taking care of their streets this past snowfall. Excellent, their streets are in great condition, at least around my house, I know that, and the main, the main, main roads, doing a great job. And I'd like to recognize City Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton coming, coming off of heart surgery. She looks pretty good. Hopefully, everything's good. Our prayers are with you, Lisa, for sure. And as I stated in several meetings, I can say one word, family. I want Dearborn Heights to be a family community. We're doing several things already. I've talked to Parks and Recreation Director Lauren Sell, and she's got several events planned for the golf course this summer, and she's very excited about the entertainment that she has lined up. I'm going to stay on her about this, a youth kind of event, like a kids, a boys' band or something for, for the youth. I'm staying on you about that. And, you know, we need more family activities. Like I said, I want to challenge all the directors to come up with something. And Kim has something, actually, our director Lauren Sell has something coming up really soon. Do you want to get up and speak about that right now, or are you going to talk about it later? Okay, all right, thank you, okay. And anyway, another thing is our business, the business opportunities we have in Dearborn Heights, we have a lot of real estate, real estate available, and I'm asking any developers or investors to invest in businesses that are family-friendly, so that, you know, like a Sky Zone or something that families can go to. I think it's very important. Another thing that's really important with families is their faith. You need your place of worship, and your place of worship needs you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Baydun.
Thank you so much. So I just have a couple of things that I have here written down. First and foremost, we know that Ramadan's coming around in April. I know I've brought this up a couple of times, I believe even to you about almost six, five, six years ago, about the food trucks and what we're going to do to make sure that we're well-prepared and having an ordinance. So I'm asking Councilmen.
I have on my agenda tomorrow, so.
To, but please make that a priority, that we have some type of ordinance, because I know the way the City of Dearborn Heights operates is if you don't have the ordinance, then it's not legal to do, and it kind of, the bickering kind of goes back and forth. And I'm 100% in full support of food trucks, that's how I started my first small business. So please to the administration, please to Corporation Council, please to our council chair to work on, work on that with them.
Sure. So I had on my reminders for tomorrow to speak with our council Gary Miatke about this, so, and I do know that this has been discussed in the past, where we do have a lot of little laws here and there as far as what is or was not allowed. So if you could do me a favor, counselor, if you could put us together, just what we have now and what issues we have to contend with in order to move forward with the food trucks, because, well, when I say move forward, provided our council body approves it. With that being the case, because I don't want a lot of the food services be out there without going through the right authorities, specifically the city government. But before they do, when they've come to our city, they've said there's just not been enough stuff in place for them to be able to do what they need to do. So if you could put something together, and then we'll go ahead and take it from there as a, as a council body, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yep, yep. My next thing is, just a reminder to everybody at home that are watching, the Crestwood School District is hosting a fundraiser, I believe. Councilman Chair Abdullah has already committed to $10,000 of the donation. Just a quick little half of his sale. I know the other real estate agents, since we're speaking about real estate agents, Hassan Ahmad has also committed to donating $10,000. Maybe not as much as Councilman David, but we'll give him $5,000. He's got $5,000. And also, thank you so much to the staff here. I know, we got Dearborn.org here. I'd love to always see a smile here who is, you know, always around with us. And also, thank you to the Crestwood School Board, from A to Z, and to the Joe Musalem, thank you so much for that. I know we also discussed that we're not going to take on any more questions, but like you and everybody else on this council, looking around the room, everybody has received phone calls on this, and like you, I found out. calls on this, and like you, I found out the same time on a Monday, my only question, which you, I believe you've answered most of them, and I know this is a six-month thing, I just have two questions, and nothing's hostile, I'm just have a quick question, what is the pay to this new appointee? Can that be answered?
Actually, I don't have the contract in front of me, but it's, it's actually less than, it's less than the deputy chief's, what we had originally.
Okay, okay, and then maybe Giriaki, uh, Giriaki, not Teriaki, I'm so sorry. Gary Miyaki can answer, is this illegal to do, where the council approves, doesn't have to approve this because it's under six months, or what is the, and then just, that's just for the clarification part.
Well, it's a little unclear, it's a little unclear to me, the mayor and I hadn't discussed this before it happened, exactly how this went about being done. Ordinarily, if this was something that was being done as a civilian appointment, it would be able to be something that would be outside of the General Government Civil Service Commission, but then there are issues about whether or not Act 78 would apply in this situation.
Counselor, you're having a hard time hearing you in the back.
I think the microphone doesn't work.
Use the mayor's microphone, maybe try the mayor's microphone, just in case.
It's always one.
Set it down. So it's, oh, that's a lot better. So it's a little unclear to me exactly what the process was that was chosen to end up doing this, and I'm, and I'm kind of in a difficult position to address the legalities, unfortunately.
Okay, okay, so to clarify though, is this a six-month, half-year appointment, or?
Yes.
So just a half-year appointment at this particular point? Okay.
Yeah, and then my last thing is, which I'm going to stress at every single city council meeting, what happened in June with the floods is not okay, our city can't afford to go through it again, I can't afford to change my carpet and change my drywall halfway through, and I also can't afford to, which I can, I can't afford to listen to all the residents about, that went through this, but I don't want to go through that again. So, Hala Dim, I'm just gonna remind us and the administration, remind us again, that please, let's stay on top of it, even if we have to do some type of investigation on the citizen infrastructure to kind of help prevent this, please, let's do that. I don't want to sleep on it, the spring's right around the corner, global warming is real, at least for what I believe, and, you know, I want everybody to know that what happened in June is going to happen again this June or July, I promise you guys it is. And you know what's gonna happen? I'm gonna say, I said it, and I told you guys more and more, please, let's, let's just, let us work into this and see what we can do to fix it, please, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Correct, Councilman Bedu, and this didn't happen in June, this happened every year in the South End for 50 years.
That is, that is absolutely correct, but what I'm saying is, the amount of precipitation that came down, they said it has never happened, and it's called a 100-year storm, this 100-year storm is going to continue to happen. So please, and again, the South End and the Ekor's Creek has definitely been a priority, and I can see that the administration is working on it, Hala Dim has put something, a survey together.
You're on top of it, Mo, you're good, he's good on this thing.
You're a good man.
He's really concerned about it, for sure.
And then my last thing is, I, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, any other comments from the council, go ahead, Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair, today we heard the president, the members of the
Councilman, here we go.
Dearborn Area Chamber from the new mayors of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, it was very informative. To echo, to echo what Councilman, Council Chair Abdullah said, at a minimum, I think the city council needs to be apprised after the fact of personnel changes, possibly through, to the council chair and then to the rest of the council, from the mayor's chief of staff regarding the changes at CDBG, the hiring of the comptroller, and some, so on and so forth, this new appointment of a new position, and some backgrounds, a minimum background on the person being appointed, I think the city council and the public is entitled to that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, any other?
Council Chair.
Council Chair Protem Moskay.
Thank you, Council Chair. We received a email, which can't make public, about what I've been clamoring about, the planning commission. And I'm gonna ask our, I don't have the authority to do, to do it, so I'm going to either ask our council chair if he could direct our Corporation Council to set up either a study session, so we can rewrite or revisit the ordinance that we have on hand, that gives the council the ultimate say in what goes on in the city as far as planning and zoning. I feel that a group of, of appointees go and, and are able to say yea or nay, and bypass city council, which is elected, and we're the ones that take the heat from the residents if the project goes afoul, okay? And I believe in our charter that we do have the authority, but it's gotta be clarified a little bit more through a study session and maybe a tweak of the ordinance. So I'm gonna ask Corporation Council, or ask our council chair if he could direct our Corporation Council to start work on that, if possible.
So at this particular point, Councilman, I think we could have our counselor Gary Miyaki just let us know in an email to all of us, if it is correct, because everything that I know is, we have to approve, you know, what the planning commission does after the fact.
He's already said that, he already sent us that.
Right, so if that's the case, then the next step would be for the administration to let the planning commission know that anything that they approve, or, well, they approve, has to come back in front of us to give it final approval, is that correct?
That is incorrect.
Okay, go ahead.
That is incorrect. That is incorrect. Most things, they have the authority to end up deciding, namely, the planning commission does. So, I mean, you choose ordinances, certain conditional items, but they're the ones who end up making decisions about site plan reviews, special land use, and so on and so forth.
Okay.
So that's why I'm asking you if we could authorize Corporation Council to start looking into tweaking an ordinance for us and have a study session, so we're on the same page, if we really want to do that or not.
Well, then, if we're gonna be authorized and tweak it before he does, I think we'd have to do some sort of a study session.
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, I have no problem putting a study session together, so we'll pick a time, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, any other?
Nancy has.
Counselor, just, go ahead, Councilman.
Yes, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that we get the eat and center restrooms done correctly in a workman-like manner, no additional charge to us, and that it's all up to code.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, and for Director Kim, of course, I just want to make sure you got that.
What's that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you got our Councilwoman's direction.
We had the plumbing inspector there Monday.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Council Chair, on that note, in previous years, many, many times, city council has approved change orders, even work done by CDBG, that have come through because contractors either, A, ran into a problem with whatever, either materials or, or a design flaw, that we've approved many, many times. So it's not an uncommon thing to have a change order like we approved tonight.
But obviously with COVID, that's kind of a game changer right now, where things have gone up. But I think where we could have done a little better, and I'm just being very blunt, I think, and I'm not necessarily putting blame on any director or anything like that, but this particular point, I hope all of our directors would work on pushing these projects through faster, so that we don't run into this type of situation, obviously. Any other comments from?
Just a quick council member. One last comment, I promise.
It better be the last one.
Last one, I just want, I know, you know, and I know he means with, the utmost respect from Councilman Tom Wensel regarding the real estate. I got a lot of real estate friends, and I just want to let you know, a lot of the reason why I believe they're, you know, on a lot of these appointments, I think they have a lot of leeway, there, I have a lot of, like, I know Councilman, both council members here, who are both, who are real estate agents, are able to pick up and say, hey, clear the rest of my schedule, I'm able to leave, or somebody that's got a nine-to-five job, or has to go fix a plumbing, can't just stop and say, let me get up and leave, let me go meet with this, let me go meet with the administration, let me go meet with Lynn, and, so I think that, I mean, there's a little bit of leeway, but I'm not saying that that's the reason why, it just might be that they're the ones being appointed or applying, or doing really well in the interview process. I don't believe that it's because they're a real estate, or that's the reason why that the mayor or the administration in the past or now is appointing a real estate agent.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that, and I know you meant no harm, I understand that.
I didn't mean any harm in that comment either, I just, I just want to get a little bit.
And I agree with you, I would love to see, you know, more dynamic and more unique people being appointed, and it's unfortunate that this community has a lot of real estate agents.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
A lot.
All right, matter of fact, we've had enough bashing of real estate agents, go ahead, Councilman.
I love them.
Council Chair, I also would like to commend DPW for an outstanding job on cleaning the snow, I did hear from different residents, this is the first time, I think, the whole city.
Second time.
Second time?
Yeah.
The mayor would be the last time.
And regarding the closed session, I'm all support for having it off days, instead of staying here for six hours.
I'm sorry?
For the closed session, I'm in support of having it off days.
Yeah, either off days, or it'll be right before the regular main city council meeting, or it'll be way at the end, and if it's way at the end of the council meeting, like, let's say hypothetically today, then we'd let the residents know that at this particular point, we're gonna be going into a closed session, there's not, I mean, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, no problem.
Pretty much, at the end of the meeting, we pretty much would.
Right, right, so all they'll be coming back to is just for us to adjourn, motion adjourned, there's nothing else for them to stick around for. And again, I'm just trying to be conscious of the audience and waiting, because I've been there as a resident, and they go into closed session, and I mean, I don't even know what they're talking about, and then, you know, you wait an hour, hour and a half, because you've got something you want to bring to the table, but you can't, because you're waiting on the closed session to finish. So I'm just trying to be conscious of that, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, at this particular point, we're gonna go to announcements, any directors that have, or elected officials have announcements, two minutes each, please. Our Treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton, welcome back, and I'm glad you're in good health.
Thank you, Council Chair, good evening, everyone. Just a quick reminder, the last day to pay your 2021 winter taxes without penalty is February 14th, so that's quickly approaching, so again, you want to pay your winter taxes before February 14th. After March 1st, you can no longer pay your 21 taxes at City Hall, because we roll them over to Wayne County, and Wayne County becomes responsible for collection. Ways to pay, there's several ways to pay, we've added some new things this year, so I just wanted to share that real quick. Of course, there's always a traditional in-person, you're always welcome to come visit us at City Hall, and we'll be very helpful with that. There are two drop boxes at City Hall, if you don't want to come in the building, we have one that's out by the parking lot, as well as one on the wall by the doors, when you enter the building on the east lot. You can also make your payments at one of the two Dearborn Heights branches of the Dearborn Federal Savings Bank, so there's one on South Telegraph and one on Warren Avenue. You can also pay online, you can pay by phone, you can pay with a phone app, you can pay at one of four kiosks throughout Dearborn Heights, four locations at your kiosk. If you have any questions about this, please feel free to call our office at 313-791-3410. The last thing I want to share with you is to mark your calendar ahead of time, we are partnering with Wayne County Treasurer Eric Sabree to offer a resource fair, and that is gonna include how to set up payment plans for delinquent taxes and remain in your home and foreclosure prevention. Right now, we have a date set of February 10th, and we will be doing that virtually, so you can join from anywhere at any time, and it's running from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we will be sharing more information when it's available, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer. Go ahead, Director of Recreation, Kim, or is that caller, Action Jackson, go ahead.
Yeah, as Councilman Wensel mentioned, we do have an event coming up that I want to make sure that everybody knows about, it's our Fire and Ice Festival on February 19th, from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's all outdoors, so it's very COVID-friendly, and it's at the Warren Valley Golf Course. We are going to be having fire eaters, fire breathers, a stilt walker, the kids train, kids games, a live entertainment, and night glow from a hot air balloon, food vendors and ice sculptures as well. So it's gonna be a full day, a lot of free activities for the community, for the residents, and for kids, so it should be an exciting, fun day.
Did you say, what did you say towards the end, there was gonna be a night glow or something?
We've got a hot air balloon coming.
Wow, and people can jump in it, and like ride?
No, 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 it's for the flame and the hat, the flame to light up the night and the event.
Awesome.
What's the date of that again, the date?
February 19th.
February 19th, what day of the week is that?
I believe it's a Saturday.
Saturday.
And it's outdoor?
It's outdoors.
Dress warm?
Definitely, dress warm, but we will have a warming tent, and we're working on having fire pits, a couple of fire pits for roasting smores.
I also heard there's gonna be a dunk tank, and they're gonna, we're gonna put either.
No, no dunk tank.
Yeah, both, both of us.
I know who can really toss a ball, though, right, Mr. Abdullah?
Come on, I can see him kicking a ball.
He dunked me a couple of times at the Berwin Center, so I know.
It was worth it.
It took him about 25 shots.
Hey, hey, don't press here. Director, is there an update on the snowboarding?
The snowboarding and the skiing, we've already started, we're doing every Friday night, going up to Mount Holly. We are having trouble getting buses, and so we're going week by week with, week with the buses, but this week, we're taking a school bus up to Mount Holly. We're taking probably 30 to 40 kids a week, it's kind of tough getting started, because we've taken, you know, almost two years off, last year, we were just up there and we sold lift tickets to the kids, because we didn't want to do the bus, that's when we were really deepened with COVID. So with that, it's, it's taking a little bit to get running again, but I think we'll be up and going full speed at some point, but it's really good to have the lower turnout right now, because we still have a lot of COVID going on, and we can social distance them on the bus and stuff like that.
Are you still taking new, new?
New skiers or snowboarders? Yes.
What's the specifications or the requirements, ages or anything like that?
Sixth grade through 12th grade.
Sixth grade through 12th grade. I've heard a couple of good things about that.
It's a really, really good program, it's one of our best youth programs that we have. So you were mentioning youth programming, I do have a couple of ideas that we're gonna work on this summer, but I wanted to get the other things in place before we start working on those.
I'm assuming if anybody's interested, they call the Parks and Recreation Department.
Correct, yep, and we can give them all the information, our flyer for our prices, and all of the information you need for the ski club is on our website.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director, appreciate it. Any other announcements?
Yeah.
Well, okay, as a commissioner, go ahead.
Great job with the CCRC, Martin Luther King Walk.
Yeah, very, very nice walk.
Hello, I hope you can hear me well, my name is Latanya Gator, I am the chairperson of the Community and Cultural Relations Commission. I definitely wanted to come and be public today to say thank you to this honorable body, city administration, of course, the mayor, to the community and the residents who came out to support our inaugural MLK Day Walk on Monday. It was a great showmanship of unity and solidarity for civil rights and equality for all of us as resident of Dearborn Heights. I definitely want to thank Dearborn Heights District 7 for partnering, partnering with us, for the Dearborn Heights Police Department, the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, we had government officials out, it was a really great event, and again, thank you, everyone who supported us, whether you were there in person or sent us a call to say, you guys are doing great work, we really appreciate it. I also want to say, as chairperson of that commission, that I came late, because I was at a D7 board meeting, but I think some of the conversation in the beginning were about appointments to the commission, we do have a vacancy, and I do understand that that appointment, according to the ordinance, lies with city council. We have no problem with following that ordinance to the T, but I think it's only fair that maybe you seek insight from us to make sure and to see what we need on that commission to be whole when it's time to fill those vacancies, because we are a very active commission, we've started doing great work, we want to continue that great work, and we want people who are passionate, whether it's through experience, or again, just heart, to make that commission as full as it can be, and we can do the great work. Our next meeting will be in person, it is on next Thursday, it's actually every first Thursday of each month, this will be our first in-person meeting, it will be at Caroline Kennedy Library at 7:00 p.m. We welcome everyone, again, because this is a community effort, we want to keep it that way. I'd be happy to answer any questions this body has, and if not, I yield my time.
Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman.
Can you give me a call tomorrow?
Sure.
You've got my number, correct?
I do.
Okay. Give me a call sometime tomorrow. There's a few things I'd like to talk to you about.
Okay. It's 12 o'clock, okay? That's my lunch break.
Anytime would be great, okay?
Sure thing. Is there anyone else that has a question or comment, anything?
Go ahead, Councilman Beden.
Quickly, just again, kudos, great job to you. I know you and Leslie really, really went in on this, and you guys did a phenomenal job. Thank you also to D-7. I'm so proud of you guys. Just another round of applause.
Thank you so much. We're a team, and we make a fabulous commission, and we have highs and lows, but we do great work. So kudos to the entire team.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other announcements? I have just a quick announcement. Thank you for coming out of retirement, our former chief, Val Torni, just to visit us. All right. Any other announcements?
Yes.
Anybody? Councilwoman Nancy Brier, go ahead.
Okay, as we normally do, on the fourth Wednesday of the month, we will be having a meeting tomorrow for the Ecorse Creek Commission. Everyone is invited. It's at 6:00 at 3335 South Beach Village. You're all welcome. Please come out and give us whatever input. I'm sure Mr. Jamal will be happy to talk to you about everything he's got going. Also, on Thursday, we have the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting at the same location, 7:00. Unfortunately, but we still will have our meeting at 7:00 on that. So anything else, you can check with me. Thank you.
What was the meeting start for the Ecorse Creek?
6:00.
Six.
6:00. Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate it. And thank you for all your hard work on South Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association meeting. Very nice work.
Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, I want to give a special thanks to our cable station staff, Bob Amcraft, John Zadiki does a lot of work, and Stan and Angela right up here are doing a great job for you guys. Appreciate all your work.
Stan and Angela, I love Okay. Thank you. We have four people. I'm not sure who iPhone is. If it's somebody, this is for announcements only, so we have Chief Myers, Hassan Jamal, Sarah Malik, if it's a resident, then that would be later, and then iPhone, if it's a resident, that would be later. So for the two members from the city, go ahead. Let's go ahead and go with Hassan Jamal. Hassan, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
I just asked him to unmute. There we go.
Good afternoon. This is an announcement for the people who are around, the residents who are around Curio Street. Tomorrow, we will start demolishing four of the houses on the Ecorse Creek. That will be part of our effort to relieve the people from the misery of the flood, if they volunteer to give FEMA their homes, and actually allow us for future development of retention, detention, or possible resolution for the Ecorse Creek that PED did put on the council today to do the study. As part of that study to see if it's possible, and it's visible, and will help, you know, detain and retain some of the access water. Currently, we have nine, nine, again, I say nine FEMA grant in process with the State Police of Michigan, since they are the agency who represent FEMA and the state of Michigan. Six of those projects, six of those grants are targeting the Ecorse Creek resolution. Three of them are already in action. Two of them, one of them is in process right now, and the other one is coming tomorrow, will be finishing, you know, the draft to apply. The other five of them, two of them are concerning the Ecorse Creek scoping. So the project that you approved today will help us actually formulate later our application to FEMA to deal and mitigate the flood resulting from the Ecorse Creek. Another two are dealing with what Councilman Beden mentioned, is we want to prevent the flooding. One of them is to study the water system, the, what we call, you know, the storm water system in both south end and north end, to see what's the best way, as P. Ali, mean professional engineer, Mr. Deep, explained in the past, how we are going to resolve this new phenomenon of 100 years, you know, that we can expect every time. One of them, just to make Council Member Beden happy, is to study how we are going to be able to divert, according to Engineer Ali, the access of the storm water into a retention, detention.
Hassan, we have to wrap it up. We have to wrap it up.
Okay. Well, it's an announcement, if you want the people to know.
No, no, go ahead, continue. But we have to wrap it up. Okay, keep the media moving.
All right. So those are very, very important for the people, since it is very, very questionable right now, what we can do about the flood. It's like, we want the residents of Dearborn Heights, south end and north end, to really trust that we are going full speed and trying to get whatever help we can from FEMA to mitigate the flooding issue in Dearborn Heights, and they are real. If you want to hear about them, tomorrow, we have the Ecorse Creek Commission. I am the ex-official, and we will be there explaining and answering any questions, how we are going to be dealing with this 50-year's problem that's been kicked and kicked and kicked. It's no more kicking the ball. We are, right now, dealing with the ball, playing with the ball, and we are going to get the ball into the goal.
Thank you, Director Hassan Jamal. Madam Clerk, I know there was two other people on Zoom. We're going to have Chief Myers speak, but, okay, so that's the only one. Okay, because all the ones were not members of the City Hall, correct?
I don't see the hands up anymore.
They were up, but they're gone now. That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the rest, you will be given an opportunity to speak during the public comments section, which is coming up next. So at this particular point, we have our police chief, Myers, had his hand up. Go ahead, police chief, can you hear us?
How about me? Are you able to hear me good?
You know what? Hold on a quick second. I'm not sure. Can the audience hear him? You're good? Okay. Go ahead, chief.
I'll do my best to speak up as loud as possible. Council Chair, thank you. You know, obviously, there's a lot going on. You see a lot of our police officers, the men and women that serve this community in the audience. I wholeheartedly agree with the mayor that we need to have a closed study session. I look forward to that closed study session. There's a lot of concerns that I have as the leader of this agency, but I want to make sure that we work together with the mayor and move this forward. But there's also some things that I need to bring up in a private session, and most importantly, we need to know at the police department what's going on. The health and safety of my officers, the mental health, and their ability to operate on a daily basis was thrown into a tizzy on Monday morning, and for the last 36 hours, I haven't been able to give them any idea of what the role and responsibilities of my position is or the commissioners is. So I'm asking that for our officers to be able to properly serve their community. They cannot have chaos, or stress, or uncertainty in their lives. This is very important to them. We need much better guidance on what the plan is forward, and we needed it on Friday, so we could have started this on Monday with our feet on the ground. Unfortunately, that's not where we're at. I'm asking that we get written directives of the new roles and responsibilities, so these officers can take their mind off of what's going on internally and focus on the health and safety of themselves and the people that they serve. So I really hope that happens very soon. I've spoken with the new commissioner. He's a very decent man, but our officers need to know clear, delineated, written rules and roles in order to properly operate. So I hope that happens sooner than later, but it should have happened before it even went into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Myers. Thank you, Chief Myers. Madam Clerk, anybody else from Zoom that has an announcement?
Not from the city.
Yeah, from the city only.
I have somebody that's on one of the boards.
On one of the boards? Let's have, okay, one final one, and then after that, we'll go to public comments. Go ahead.
Steve, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yeah, Steve Lobkovich, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. First off, Council Chair Abdallah, I appreciate you bringing up what seems to be a pretty sensitive subject. As Chief Myers stated, there was a big change made yesterday within the police department. And I also want to thank Corporate Counsel Miyaki for bringing up the question of whether this appointment was done legally, as the city charter states that there's a civil service commission to be appointed. The city recognizes Act 78 as the civil service commission, which is appointed and is given the charge of any appointments and promotions within the police and the fire departments. And it appears that there's an appointment that's been made without the use of the civil service commission, and I would like to know from the mayor, and also look forward to Council Miyaki's opinion as to whether this was done legally, and why the mayor decided to do this without the use of his own commission that's basically in place in order to make appointments to the police department and the fire department. I just wanted to raise those questions. I appreciate you bringing up the subject. I know it's sensitive. There's a lot of people that are wondering what's going to happen. I don't know if the residents of the city are aware that we have a civil service commission that's, that's, it's been put in place in the charter. It was adopted. It's a state law, and it's the way that we go about hiring and appointing people to the police and fire departments. As a commissioner of the Act 78 Civil Service Commission, I can say I was not approached, so I want to just make the statement that the civil service commission was bypassed in this instance. I'd like to know why, and I'd like to know whether or not that was legal.
Okay.
So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And although I let Steve on under the announcements part, and I know he asked some questions, so just out of fairness to him, I'll allow whoever wants to answer it during the public comments section, because this is really more of a public comment. But I did allow you to continue. That's fine. Hearing there's no, since there's no more announcements at this particular point, we're going to go to the public comments section. Now, during the public comments section, there's two gentlemen that have asked for an extra minute, minute, minute and a half. So I told both of them that I would allow them to do that. What's going to happen is our Council Chair Pro Tem will be putting these up for you, for those in the audience. There'll be 60 seconds left, 30 seconds left, 15 seconds left, and a stop. You have allotted three minutes per audience member to be able to speak. That would now, if it happens to be any council members, or maybe the mayor, or maybe our counsel, Gary Miyaki, happens to answer, that time will be stopped. Councilman, Chair Pro Tem, Ray Muscat, will be keeping track of the time. What I'm asking everybody to do, because this is, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Everybody's here to make their comments, and that's fine. And I'm a big believer in freedom of speech, absolutely. But what I want everyone to do is stay respectful. You know, I could have a three paragraph announcement read. I'm not going to do that. Just stay respectful, state your comments. I will allow you to speak, and I'll allow whoever needs to answer it to go ahead and answer you. But let's keep this thing respectful, please. I'd really, really appreciate it from everyone in the audience. With that being the case, I'd like to go ahead and, and please, you know, keep an eye on Council Chair Pro Tem to know how much more time you've got left, because, I'm going to tell you guys right now, as a council chair, what I don't want to do is just keep, you know, hitting this thing and try to be rude. I don't want to do that. So we're trying to do this to be less rude or not rude, hopefully. And I don't want to get in trouble with my mom. So please, watch this thing and keep track of it. Thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem. All right. We'll go ahead and take public comments from the audience. Please state your name and the city that you live in. Is that correct, Madam Clerk, or anything beyond that?
Name, street.
I'm sorry. Name, street.
And city.
And city you live in. Thank you.
Rose Trepepi, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County.
Okay. So again, just as I've said to a lot of the council members, please make sure you talk as close as possible to the microphone, because people are complaining on Zoom that they can't understand what somebody's saying.
Did you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
I just a couple of things. Do our employees have a contract yet? Does anybody answer that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Our employees have a contract yet. I was told in April that they would have a contract by June. Then I was told, no, it would be in October. But this is February coming up. Where's the contract? All this money being spent on all these people, and these people getting a $10,000 raise bonus, where is our employees getting a contract? They're the heart of the city. They're the ones that work every day. They need their According to the bathrooms at Eaton, our director said, deputy said, they're fixed. It's bull
Excuse me. Point of order. Remember, we said, stay respectful. Go ahead.
Trying to stay respectful.
Well, we can't have those words, though.
Well, that, I'm beginning, that's as nice as I can be.
Okay.
When I call and I ask to talk to you, I don't want to talk to Muscat. I don't want to talk to Mo. If I call and talk to the mayor, that's who I want to talk to. I don't care about all this crap, because we're, the seniors have heard the same story over and over and over at Eaton. I would like, and I think you were one of them, about five years ago, came out to the Eaton Center with Ray. We had a problem. You came out, and it was fixed. Can you please come to the center and see what's going on? Five years, the bathroom in the office is disaster. Just a disaster. The new ones are a disaster.
I do know, just to answer that quickly, that the director, the recreation director, did email the answers, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Director, she was, Rose was included on the email. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. So I do know
That had nothing to do with that bathroom in the office. Nothing. And the same line that I heard over the years, I heard again in that email that you also heard. We also would like to have our parties back at the center. We don't want to go to the golf course. We want our own little parties. So if somebody can help us with that, it would be greatly appreciated. And if you, all you could come to the center one day and just look at what a disaster it is, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rose.
My name's April Simmons. I live on Colgate Street, and I used to work for the city for 21 years. And I'm going to tell you something. That man right there has screwed this city up totally. Before I left, before you became mayor, we had people that knew what the hell they were doing. Now, all of a sudden, we had a controller who didn't know how to do his job. I had to call him and tell him what to do with my last paycheck. Your guy didn't know what to do. I had to tell him what to do. I had to tell him how to figure it out, how to put it together. If it hadn't have been for Tammy and me, I wouldn't got my last damn paycheck. That's ridiculous. And it's not just that. Not just that. You got rid of all the good people that knew what they were doing, so you could put your friends in, who didn't know what they're doing. What are you doing? Then, you have the nerve to put in Then you have the nerve to put in, take the police chief who was doing a good job, and put somebody above him. For what? So you can spend another $100,000 on somebody who doesn't need to be there? What is wrong with you? We are a small bedroom community. We don't need to spend extra money. Our police chief was good. You didn't need to top him. If you have a problem, you need to talk to him. That's how you solve problems. You don't pay more money for somebody else. But that seems to be the way you do things. You add more people. You've got two people doing one job all over the place. Fix your problem by one person doing the right job. That would be fine. Thank you.
Hello, Rick Simmons, Colgate, Dearborn Heights. Also, on that same respect about the so-called commissioner, City Detroit has thousands more officers than this city does. They don't have a commissioner. They have a chief. And what you described to me happened to a company I worked for 30 years ago. They brought in this person to make it more lean. When he came in in the morning, a person went out the door that afternoon. That is exactly how it was described to us, the way you described it to this council and to us residents. This is a scam to get rid of our hardworking officers, in my opinion, because that's exactly what happened to me. I didn't lose my job, but many of my friends did. When they found out that they were getting laid off, or when they laid off all these people, they found out they've got too lean. And all the crime is going to go up because these officers are no longer on the job. Second, that Ekor's creek. I can tell you how to fix it as a resident there for 25 years. Dredge. It needs to be a minimum of 15 feet down and a berm put up. Because as many as it hits flood level, it goes out in streets, goes into people's basements. Going by the air, that's not going to fix it. Dredging that ditch, which is what it basically is, minimum of 15 feet, and probably another 15-foot berm. That'll stop most of the flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And sir, obviously, there's a commission meeting tomorrow on the creek, so obviously, you're welcome to come in and.
Yeah, I'm supposed to come up till 7:30.
No problem. But you're welcome to email, maybe go through Councilwoman Nancy Breyer, so she could make whatever comments you want to make. Are they recorded? I'm not sure. Are they recorded?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Okay. Thank you. Next resident, if they have a public comment. Any other public comments?
Oh, here we go.
By the way, I don't want to give people the wrong impression. During public comments, it, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying something.
Tell her to move over and sit so she can be next.
Yeah, whoever, it does not necessarily have to be a resident. I don't want to give the wrong impression. The resident, a resident of Dearborn Heights, in order to make a comment, you could be from any city. Go ahead.
Okay, in that case, I am Beyonce. I'm here to speak, no. My name's Leslie Winless, and I live on Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. I decided to speak at public comment instead of announcements, because I want this to be clear, that it is my personal opinion and not the opinion of the full board of the commission. I want to talk about the appointment. One of the things that was brought up tonight was the word favoritism. I don't know how anybody in this city, let alone someone appointed to another board, could feel like the Culture Commission is being shown favoritism when we're literally always under a microscope for every single thing we do. If you attend our meetings at times that the administration deems it appropriate to come, it's nothing but complaints about things that what we could be doing better. So I don't know how anybody could say that we're being shown favoritism when all we're asking for is to have a voice in the person that's going to join our team, where we work so hard. Can you hear me? Where we work so hard already. So we're just trying to make sure that person is the right fit. And we never actually asked for the appointment to be taken off. We just asked for it to be put up by the right people. It was not a mayor's appointment. It was a city council appointment. And if you care about the work we're doing, like everyone said they did on Dr. Martin Luther King Day, then on the other 364 days, I want to see you show it. And that would mean hearing input from the people on there who built it from the ground up, who actually advocated for it to be here, because it was vacant and dead for 10 years, and nobody brought it up until Latanya came here and started advocating for it. So support the people who made this commission come into existence and the people who are doing the hard work on there. The other thing I wanted to note is that I researched on the website that you all have not done anything for Juneteenth as a city for the week of, the weekend of, for four years. I want to know, after we had our first Juneteenth event last year, why all of a sudden are you guys doing something on the weekend of Juneteenth, knowing that we were planning something all three days of that weekend? So that's one question. And it's a federal holiday now, so it's not an excuse that you didn't know. And the last thing I wanted to ask for clarification on is the audit for Plant Moran. One of the things that Mayor Bazey said was that the police department is no exception. So I wanted clarification on that. Are you saying that Plant Moran currently does not look at the police department, and you needed a commissioner to look at the police department? Or that there are no exception for behavior? I just wanted clarification on what role the commissioner is playing. Is he auditing finances or behavior? Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, will I answer these?
Well, Plant Moran does just financials. I mean, they got to be doing our financials and helping us with, as I mentioned earlier, with the controller's office. They're going to go through our office and look at procedures and just look at anything like purchasing, going out for bed, and all those things.
Okay. And also, if, I think she had a question in regards to June 18th.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, I'm sorry. Can anybody answer that for her?
Probably have to talk to.
I think that will fall to with the director.
Yeah.
We emailed back and forth today, and I still didn't get an answer about which event she was talking about.
The one on June 17th.
The one on June 17th. I had emailed her back requesting if she wanted to partner together and tie the movie in together, and then I didn't get a response back.
I responded. The last response is for me.
But there was no answer in regards to partnering together.
Okay, talk into the microphone, Kim.
So if that's something we can talk about.
Okay, can you guys maybe meet right after this, just to make sure you clear up whatever situation? Okay, great. Thank you. Any other members of the audience that wish to speak during the public comments? Please come up to the podium.
Daniel Waltz Tarni.
Hello, Chief.
Let explain.
Can you just lift your mic up?
Let explain, Brighton, Michigan. I'm here today because I read in the paper that, I read in the paper that there was an issue in the Arab American News that the police department needed a police commissioner. And I saw the name that they named the police commissioner, Dr. Joseph Thomas. He has excellent credentials, so it, being a person from the city for 32 years, working with the fine men and women in the uniform that are over there in that corner, I decided to come in to see if there's anything I can offer the city, the police department, the city council, the mayor, corporate council, anything I can do to help alleviate this problem that is apparently serious, because the man they hired, he goes to places like Muskegon Heights or Ekor's to figure out whatever the issues are. So I want to offer my assistance in any way I can to assist the police chief, the mayor, anybody here in this room, the officers, or the citizens of Dearborn Heights. So I'm putting it out there that I'm available for assistance.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Hi, Pamela Swirple, Kenmore, Dearborn Heights.
I'm sorry, I hate to repeat it. Just the microphone. Thank you.
Pamela Swirple, Kenmore Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Intentional killings of police officers reached 20-year-high in 2021. Right now, police are struggling every single day to try to do everything that they possibly can to keep the citizens safe. We're seven police officers down that have not been hired, but the mayor has chosen to focus on hiring a commissioner. And he did not post the job. He did not ask for anybody to compete for that job. The job, did you do a background check on the person? What's his pay, benefits? You say six months, but is he going to get a pension from it? Is he a civilian that's hired, or is he a police officer? Is he a sworn police officer? I'm asking you.
Again, like I said, I'm going to go into a closed session, council chair. I'm not going to answer any questions regarding this commission until we go into a closed session and discuss some things. And again, that's the kind of disrespect that we have.
No, you need to, I want to know as a citizen. I want to know as a citizen.
We have, we have.
Time my timeout right now.
No, we do. We do.
We, okay, there's council members, a mayor, and elected officials, and there's disrespect. Imagine what's happening to the residents. That's all I'm going to say. We need to go into a closed session, council chair, to discuss these issues.
Thank you, what?
Okay. Guys, go ahead, ma'am.
So as a citizen, I'd like to know what his pay is. He's part-time. Who do the police report to? Is he a sworn police officer? Is he filling a position that's absent from the police department? So he's an actual acting police officer? Because like I said, the police department, seven police officers short, they're putting their lives every single day on the line to keep everybody safe. Armed robbery is up. Just again, it happened at Annapolis and Southfield, or at Van Born and Southfield today. We still need officers hired, but you're focusing on hiring a commissioner that you won't tell me whether he's a police officer or another civilian. And I want to know what you're doing to try to hire, to get the staff up so that these guys aren't stressed out, forced to have to work overtime because it's so short, and putting their lives in danger. You're not answering questions. You just keep saying, I don't know. And that's not an answer.
We do have posting for police officers. I do want to hire police officers.
You didn't have a posting for the commissioner.
Well, you asked for the police officers. We do have openings for police officers, and anybody can apply for police officers.
So why did you not spend your time recruiting police officers instead of recruiting a commissioner that we didn't need because we already have a chief? As a mayor, that's your job, to keep these guys safe and let them come home to their families every night. You're failing as a mayor, which you promised, because you're off doing something different instead of keeping the dedication to the officers every day that show up putting their life on the line. You're focusing on other things instead of focusing what's important right in front of you. Because somebody says something you might not like, you get mad, and you treat people horribly instead of treating it as, okay, sometimes people don't get along. Let's all work it out. Seven officers short, and you hire a commissioner that's not needed. That's not even logical. What he's getting paid, you could have hired at least two other officers. They start out at $40,000 a year. $40,000. Do you really think that people are going to want to come here? You should be focusing your time on making this a city that people want to come to, not want to run from. That's why the city is not safe anymore. And you're not giving me answers.
There's jobs opening for police officers. Any police officer.
Excuse me?
I said there's openings for police officers.
But you're focusing on hiring a commissioner that's not needed versus focusing on hiring police officers to make the city safer. Seven officers down, that's an entire shift. Do you understand the stress these guys are under trying to cover for seven officers? No answer. You don't have answers for anything somebody's asking you, but yet you sure did when you were campaigning. It's not right. What you're doing to these guys is not right. What you're doing to the department is not right. And what you're doing to their families is not right.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, audience. Next person up. Go ahead. Please state your name, street you live on, and the city you live in.
Ahmad Hawaiz, here at Street, Dearborn Heights. Look, this is not going to be a very popular comment. I'm not going to get any claps, but.
Talk to the microphone.
I moved to this city about four and a half years ago. And if anybody here is under any impression that this city is run right or was run right at any point in time, you guys are delusional. From the administration that was here, I'm sorry, guys, but even the police force, it was not run any way that a normal city would be run. I hope to God that this mayor right here does change things. I hope to God that this city council changes things. Because what's been here.
If you don't mind, please, nothing from the audience.
Because what's been here has been nothing but a complete disgrace. And hopefully, you guys will be able to change it. I'm glad that this man was elected. I'm glad that the city council was elected. Hopefully, we might actually have change. And to sit there and come out here and just attack someone because your friends are now all of a sudden being forced to do their job, okay? That is laughable. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Okay, no comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please go up to the podium and take time to do so. Otherwise, no comments from the audience, please.
Who's phone?
Somebody forgot their phone here. Okay. Go ahead. Okay, no, please, nothing from the audience. Everybody, please stay respectful. I'm going to go ahead, you know, I'm not going to start hitting the gavel and make everybody go crazy. I'm going to allow you to speak, but please stay respectful. No comments from the audience. If you'd like to make a comment, and you've not spoken yet, you're more than welcome to come up and speak, and I'll give you the opportunity to do so. At this particular point, I'm sorry? Yeah, one comment per person, of course. Okay. The gentleman here, Hassan Saab, called me and asked for a little extra time, so I'm going to go ahead and allow him to do that. Please go ahead.
Before I start, can I come up and pack it to each member of the council? I want this.
Okay, go ahead. But don't start the time yet. Actually, just give it to the assistant clerk.
I want this entered on record, please.
You want this? I'm sorry?
I want the full document entered into the record.
Entered into the record.
Okay, entered into the record, provided our counselor can okay that. I have no problem with it. Okay.
We'll keep a copy.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Go ahead.
Just before I start, I had a follow-up comment. Before I start with my packet that I had, I had a comment for Mr. Muscat. I just want to note today, here, all these officers here, how many officers drove a city-owned car to this event?
Okay.
How many officers drove a city-owned vehicle to this event?
Okay, talk to the council. Talk to the council, please.
How many, I would like the council to ask, how many of these officers drove a city-owned car to the city council meeting?
Hi, David.
Okay. Thank you, officer.
No, 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 no. I'm saying the officers that are sitting, off-duty officers.
Okay, talk to the council, please.
How many off-duty officers sitting here drove a city-owned vehicle to come here?
Okay, this will be something, maybe we could have our chief look into, but I don't want to put anybody on the spot here. Go ahead.
Just for the, just for the record, I retained an attorney, and I paid for a legal opinion.
Name and street.
I paid Mr. Shank.
Okay, I'm sorry. If you don't mind, Hassan, can you please state your name, full name, street you live on, and the city?
My name is Hassan Saab. I live on John Daly in Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
So I retained Mr. Shank to do a legal opinion about the Act 78 and the way the city operates in the police department. The concept that the chief is protected under Act 78 is false. Completely false. He's not protected under Act 78. He's not protected under a union. So everything that they're spreading online and saying to what the mayor, the mayor has the full authority, at his discretion, to remove the mayor, the chief, appointed chief, from either internal or somewhere from outside. And this was passed not only by the state's constitution, the city charter itself. Under, if you look at the package, under a section, it says that the body voted to give the mayor that authority. So when officers spread false information in the department that the mayor is, the chief is protected, he's untouchable, that's absolutely false. He's an appointed position. He's not protected under Act 78. And if you look at the third page of this, and anybody want to copy this, And if you look at the third page of this, and anybody want to copy this, I'll gladly give it to them. If you look at the fourth page at the top, it says, "The charter that the electors of Dearborn Heights voted to approve, therefore implemented by the city mandates that the council shall adopt an ordinance providing for a civil service system for all of the employees in the city of Dearborn Heights except otherwise provided in the city charter. The ordinance shall contain a provision providing for unclassified service and classified services that shall exclude from the provisions of the civil service system. The police department chief and other heads of city, department of the city, Dearborn City Heights Charter, Section 511B, the City of Dearborn Heights City Code Ordinance outlines the general powers and duties of the Civil Service Commission regarding classified service employees." And then it is further classified that the service shall include all positions in the city not specifically included in the charter and unclassified service under Section 2155, because the city charter excludes the chief of police in Section 511B. This ordinance does not apply to the chief. So, there, wherever they're getting their information from, nobody can uphold what the city charter and the city had voted on and people, the elected officials had voted on before. The city in the past 20 years has been ran as they want this department. The laws have to be followed. Secondly, not only did I obtain this attorney for this professional opinion, I have also filed lawsuits against five individual officers in the city, including the chief. Mayor, you'll be getting that. Mr. Mayaki, you have a duty to reply to my attorney with any emails he sends you or documents, and you failed to do that, sir. I'm spending money out of my personal pocket for this, and you failed to respond.
I responded to him.
You did not respond to him.
Well, I did.
Okay, when, today?
No. He got the email. You should speak to Mr. Shank. I replied to his email.
When?
I don't recall, sir. There are plenty of other things that I have to be concerned about beyond your particular issue.
Okay. And then there's another section in the ordinance that says the Dearborn Heights City Charter grants removal power to the mayor. The City of Dearborn Heights Charter allows the powers and duties that the mayor possesses, one of which the power to appoint and remove all directors, commissioners, and boards which are in charge of several departments of the City of Dearborn Heights in five, again, 3B emphasize that the mayor explicitly granted the authority to appoint all department hands, and the names as such shall be classified in writing to the city clerk before the third Monday of April of each regular bi-stageal city election. Section 515. The conclusion of this, I don't want to read all nine pages. The Fireman and Police Service Acts, being Public Act 78 of 1935, recognizes power in electoral written by municipality to determine the scope of their municipality's civil service system. And the City of Dearborn Heights, that the charter has initially removed the chief of police from their system. Instead, the chief of police is a mayoral appointee. Additional, the charter expresses grants the mayor the authority to remove the police chief. As a result, and by the will of the voters of Dearborn Heights, the chief of police is an appointed by the mayor and is subject to removal at the discretion of the mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Hassan.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rachel Lapointe on Merrick Street in Dearborn Heights, and I just have a couple thoughts. Half of the drama in Dearborn Heights comes from rumors and miscommunication, in my opinion. A lot of the issues being brought up tonight could have been solved by clear, open communication. It doesn't mean, thank you, but, thank you, but, hold your applause, please. It does not mean, however, that you have to like, you know, let everything out. If there's a lawsuit, if there's things that need to be kept private, obviously, you can keep them private, but you can still communicate with people. I do this with my children five bazillion times a day. Every mother has. Pretty much every father has, too. You tell your kids stuff, and you withhold things from them, right? Like, you don't always tell them everything about why you're doing something, but you'll tell them a little bit. You'll tell them what's appropriate for them. And I just, I wish, instead of hiring someone out the gate, beginning of the year, for a very large sum of money, if we were going to hire anyone, I probably would have hired a communications director, because our city is just terrible at that, because look at this. Like, come on, guys. We need to have clear communication, because that's what transparency is about, right? Mr. Mayor, if you had gone last week, not before you hired someone, and said, "Hey, guys, I'm, I'm working on something. I really want our police force to be the best it can be, so just don't worry, we're working on this," that probably would have eased a significant amount of anxiety. Surprise announcements are never good, unless it's like you want a million dollars, okay? Like, I'm sure all our officers would love that. So, we have to work on that communication. It's also clear there's a lot of miscommunication just between departments. What Leslie was saying about conflicts in scheduling between the Parks Department and a commission, that should never happen. There needs to be one calendar for the city. And I include like school boards and stuff with that because I was here late, because I was at the D7 school board meeting. There should not be meetings on the same night that people need to go to. Like, that's just, it's just, okay. Last thing, Dave, I'd love to talk with you as the new council chair about some items regarding free speech and things, because it's absolutely okay and protected by the First Amendment for people to say things like bullshit. Bullshit's not disrespectful. Swearing's allowed by the First Amendment. There's some fun stuff with that, that I talked about with D7, but we'll talk later.
Sure, I'd be more happy to talk about it, but what I don't want is during any council session, for somebody to say, hypothetically, and I'm not referencing the previous person, but let's say hypothetically, that word, and then maybe a council member says a word a little bit above that, and then that person says something a little bit.
It's still protected.
The next thing we know, it gets out of hand, and what I don't want to do, I want it to continue to stay a respectful discussion.
Absolutely.
As you've noticed, there's been some things that have been said that, you know, maybe the mayor, myself, or whoever it is agrees or disagrees with, I will let that go, no problem. I just don't want the wrong verbiage used.
But, but tread that line carefully.
I want you to know he's not stripping any constitutional rights. I think he's trying to control the room and making sure that things are not hostile.
But I just know that this is a topic I've done a significant amount of research on for, for other things, and there's, we've got a lot of latitude as the public here to tell you guys what we think of you. So, if someone wanted to come up and say, and I don't mean this personally, Dave, "Thank you, Dave Abdullah," they could, but that is a protected speech. That's the.
Okay, I will.
Let's have this conversation later, point of order, please.
I'll definitely have a conversation with you about it.
But seriously, but you know what?
Thank you.
But seriously.
Okay, thank you.
Protected speech.
Thank you.
Amen, thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, real, real quick comment?
Yes, sorry.
Real quick comment. You're the second person today that has said something, at least to me, and to the, now, you're the first person in public about having meetings on the same day as other, you know, even, we had our corp, our reporter from one of the papers, she had to leave early because there was another city council meeting elsewhere.
Yes.
Like in Dearborn. You know, Dearborn and Dearborn Heights has three papers, and she has limited staff on what she can do and how places we can go. But to change our meeting, that would be a charter revision, number one.
Yeah, no, no, right.
But all the other commissions, we need to try to move them from a Tuesday to a day that city council is not being held on.
But she is right about better communication.
And we have to, and we have nothing to do with the school boards. We have to ask them to maybe move theirs, too.
Right, and that's why I'm saying something like a communications director or someone that's going to kind of orchestrate all that would be kind of prudent and save a lot of people time.
So, I agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rachel.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Good evening, Sam, Dearborn Heights, Garland Drive.
Sam, please speak to the mic.
Lot of accusation was made to Mayor Bazey tonight, starting from the flood in the south end all the way to the police department thing. Majority of you guys, and probably the most of the resident of Dearborn Heights, they know me as the FEMA guy in Dearborn Heights and the flood guy. If it wasn't for Mayor Bazey spending tons of time with me, as you recall, council chair and Councilman Musket, when the previous administration have lied to the resident of Dearborn Heights, and specifically to the south end resident, about several grants that were brought in by the FEMA and the Michigan State Police. And if it wasn't for Mayor Bazey believing in this and spent tons of time, and he made sure he brought those money back to the city, believe me, nothing would have been done. The least we could have told him, thank you for the effort they have done. Thank you for the time they have spent when he didn't have to. He was just a council member. He didn't have to spend bunch of time, bunch of hours to finish that up. Going back to the Dearborn Heights Police Department, nothing against no police officer or anything, but the chief is very confident of himself, and he has nothing to be afraid of or anything. I don't care whether he's going to bring in a commissioner, if he's going to bring in the president to be overseeing his work. If you're not doing anything wrong, why would you care? But just to let you guys know, and just to let the resident of Dearborn Heights know, I am personally aware of at least a dozen of cases that have been filed within the Dearborn Heights Police Department collecting dust, and the majority of them are felony cases. Yes, I really mean it, felony cases.
Guys, no, no comments from the audience, please.
Felony cases that they're just sitting in Dirk.
One second, one second.
Go ahead.
If there's any comments from the audience, I don't mind you speaking. Again, it's free speech, no problem, but just come up, speak at the podium. I don't want the back and forth between audience members and people at the podium. And the person at the podium, that's their right to speak at this particular point, so we got to give him the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Please make sure you stopped it.
And I really mean it, felony cases. Mayor Bazey was appointed to his position almost last January. Within one year, he was able to bring in two FEMA grant and save tons of property in the south end of Dearborn Heights, and God knows how many family they moved out to a peaceful area. So, let's give him disability and let him clean up the police department. Thank you for all the effort, Mayor Bazey.
Thank you, sir. Next person up, please state your name, street you live on, and the city you live in.
Chris Papalexis.
Close to the microphone, thank you.
Chris Papalexis, Chalmers Lane, Howell, Michigan. And I'm here tonight not speaking. I am a member of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Police Department. I'm speaking on behalf of myself.
Sure, go ahead.
So, I appreciate the council's time, the mayor's time, to allow me to speak tonight. As the chief spoke earlier, not only himself, but all of us as members of the Dearborn Heights Police Department were completely blindsided by the Commissioner Joe Thomas. And this is not an attack on Commissioner Joe Thomas. I've met, I've met Commissioner Joe Thomas in the past. His credentials are there for everyone to see. I have nothing but great things to say about Joe Thomas and his time in law enforcement. But what I do have to say is there's a lot of comments made about members of the Dearborn Heights Police Department. And I would like to come up here and say, not only on my behalf, but other the members of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, that they are hardworking men and women that put their lives on the line every single day, working 12, 16 hours a day, giving up time with their family, giving up time in their personal lives to serve the citizens of Dearborn Heights. And when we are blind, completely blindsided by something to the point that we found out tonight, not even the mayor's corporate counsel was aware of the legality of what the mayor did by bringing in a commissioner. And I would like to applaud Councilman Baydun and you, Councilman Abdullah, the chair, for bringing this up in this meeting and not holding it for a closed session, so the members and the community could have a chance to speak during this time and have a full understanding of what the commissioner's job is and have their, their questions answered, even though most of them were not answered tonight, but at least gave them a forum. I would say, I've been in law enforcement for 13 years. I worked in, for the Dallas Police Department for five years, and I came here and I've been with the Dearborn Heights Police Department for eight years. And I would have to say that I've worked for a lot of chiefs. In Dallas, we had a lot of chiefs, chiefs of police, and Chief Myers is one of the best police chiefs that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. He genuinely cares about the men and women of this city. He's a lifelong resident. He has devoted his life to the city of Dearborn Heights, and he's devoted his, his time to all members of the police department by making sure that our well-being is taken care of. If people have issues with something that Chief Myers does, you're not going to like everything that he does. You're not going to like anything, everything everybody does. But the point is, when you don't like something, you go to the person and you meet with the person. You don't show up in his office Monday morning with somebody that you just hired, and he has nothing to say about it. He has no, nothing, he doesn't know about it, and you show up with this gentleman, and now this gentleman is now Chief Myers' boss. We have policies and procedures in place. We have a command structure in place that works. The last thing I would like to say is the gentleman that came up here and expressed that he's lived in the city for an X number of times, and he is not happy with the police department. I would say this, if any of you would like to know who we are, you're more than welcome to come to the police station and meet any of us. And if you don't like what, if he doesn't like what's going on in the city, I don't see him sitting up in any of your seats to be in a position to change. If he would like something changed, we have seven open spots. He is more than welcome to go to a police academy, get a job with the city of Dearborn Heights, and serve the citizens that he lives around. Thank you for my time.
My name is Patricia Collier. I live on, on Colgate in Dearborn Heights. First of all, the lack of communication in this whole city is terrible, whether it's in the rec department, whether it's in the police department, whether it's in you as the council. But I want to say one thing. I had an intruder in my home on October the 2nd, and I want to thank Dearborn Heights Police Department, because I called 911, and that officer told me, "Do not get off this line." And as that man was beating my doors from the outside, worked his way in, I want to say thank you. So, I'm sorry, somebody's doing a good job over there with these men and women.
Jordan Datter, member of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, also the Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors Association President. The last two days for me.
City you live in, please.
Uh, City of Levon.
And close the microphone.
Sorry, sir. The last two days, I could speak for myself. I've been on the phone nonstop, feeling calls from members of my union, talking to city officials, members of the public, retirees. I'm not here to bash the mayor. I'm not here to bash any council people. We all work in this city because we care, and we care to be here. I'm not here to second-guess decisions that are made because I respect the chain of command and I follow orders, just like every single one of the people over here. We care about this city, and I, as Officer Sergeant Papalexis stated, anybody who has questions about how the police department operates, you're more than welcome to come in. We welcome it. You know, we're doing, trying to do a better job of being involved with the public and showing up to, to events and being a part of the community. But in order for us to be a part of this community, we have to be welcomed, and we have to be invited. We love this city. We care about the residents. We have a lot of people that bash us, and we shrug it off every day and continue to show up to work. The mayor is the mayor of this city. He makes the decisions, and we do what he says. If we don't agree with something, we should be able to talk about stuff and people's feelings not get hurt. And I'm not saying that's what happens, sir. We're working through things, and I'm hoping that we can have a discussion about some things openly without people getting upset. I think that this would have been a good decision for us to involve everybody in, or for the mayor, maybe to bring him in and let us all meet him ahead of time, because I honestly feel bad for Commissioner Thomas, because he's set up for failure as of right now, because he was brought in and nobody knew what he was there for, and we don't know who our boss is. And that's, to me, is the most frustrating part, because I don't want to have to worry about stuff like this. I know I'm the union president, but this is the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night, worrying about my membership and worrying about the guys that I work with every day. We might have our problems internally that we deal with, but at the end of the day, you can see all the different faces sitting out here, because we, at the end of the day, we all care about each other, and we all care about the city. I hope that we can move past this and discuss this, and I know the gentleman back here really does not like us, and I hope that we can figure out something else, sir, to change that. I, I hope that anybody here who has problems with us, please come in and talk to us, be it, you want to talk to the union presidents, you want to talk to the administration, let's work through this, because what's going on isn't working. I'm sick of butting heads with people. I'm sick of worrying about things that. Because we, at the end of the day, we all care about each other and we all care about the city. I hope that we can move past this and discuss this. And I know the gentleman back here really does not like us, and I hope that we can figure out something else, sir, to change that. I hope that anybody here who has problems with us, please come in and talk to us. Be it, you want to talk to the union presidents, you want to talk to the administration, let's work through this because what's going on isn't working. I'm sick of butting heads with people. I'm sick of worrying about things that as a sergeant in the police department, I should not have to worry about. I want to come in every day and do my job. That's all I want to do. That's what all these guys want to do. They want to support their families. I take this home every day, and I have to have my wife worrying about me, about my mental health, about what's going on. Stuff that we shouldn't be worrying about. That's really all it is. And I know I've talked to each one of you individually. I know you guys care. We just have to work through this to figure something out so we're all on the same page. That's all I ask, and that's all any one of us could ask. Because at the end of the day, we all work for the residents of Dearborn Heights, and we should all be able to come to work and not have to worry about what tomorrow's going to hold. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hassan Bazey. I live on Chehan Highway. That's how I always refer to it.
City two, just in case?
Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Talk into the mic, please, Hassan. Talk into the mic.
Talk into the mic, yeah.
Lift it up if you want.
Thank you, thank you. Let's all agree on one thing. Tonight's meeting is a great meeting. At least something good came out of it that we got the chance to see our good police officers in the city of Dearborn Heights. I mean, we salute them, and we thank them for the services that they do. Also, if there is a person that would know the value of the police officers or the, what they do, is our good mayor, Mr. Bill Bazey, because he comes from a good background from the Marines. Definitely, there is a problem. I mean, Mr. Mayor, he's been elected. How long you been in the office, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind? I mean, just when you were elected, not when you were appointed. Couple months, maybe? Three months?
November.
A month?
25 days.
25 days. He made the decision to appoint a commissioner. He has his own reasons. I mean, we elected him to do the job, to take the city into a different level. We had issues in the city. We all know. We've been involved. I mean, good thing tonight that we see the officers, see their faces, we get to know them. I mean, I've been in the city for 25 years. My kids got married. I asked them to stay in the cities. We all need to work the problems that we have. We cannot judge right now from 25 days. I mean, maybe the mayor did the right decision. Maybe he did not. Let's be transparent. Let's be fair. Let's, I mean, work together. Let's give him a chance. I mean, the chief, I heard over the Zoom, he asked for a study session if I'm not mistaken, or at least he need to know. I mean, give the mayor, give the police chief a chance to discuss this. Maybe he can, you know, go back on his decision. Maybe he need to move forward. I mean, it's nothing against the officers themselves. There is an issue, an audit. We had an issue before in the city. Let's give the mayor, let's don't micromanage his position in the city and just be fair as a citizen and give him some chance to prove himself and to tell us. I'm interested to know why he did hire a commissioner. I mean, we all are interested to know. Let's give him a chance. Let's give us a chance. Let's work together. Let's build a community, communication between the police department and the community. Let's see how we can help, how they can help our needs. I mean, we all have an interest in this city. We need to come together. We need to be transparent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good luck. We appreciate what the police officers do every day. It's a hard job. Thanks for the city council, and we hope that we come into a good conclusion. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Hassan. I'd also like to take this up to you not only to thank Hassan, but all other members of the community that continue to stay active. Your activism and other people's activism doesn't go unnoticed, so I can tell you for myself, I do appreciate it. I do appreciate any resident that's active, including, of course, our police officers. Next person up. Any more members from the audience? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move over to those member, or those in the audience on Zoom. Madam Clerk, go ahead and start letting people in. Okay, on Zoom, our madam clerk is letting in Sarah.
Sarah Malik.
Hi, my name is Sarah Malik. I live on Outer Drive in Dearborn Heights, and I just wanted to say that we support Mayor Bill Bazey and his decision-making, and we appreciate the fact that he hired a police commissioner to better the police department. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Next person up, madam clerk.
Dana Parrish.
Dana Parrish, please go ahead.
Good evening. Dana Parrish, 5614 Greenlee Park, Dearborn Heights. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One of them was, excuse me, I'm getting my video on. One of them is, it's been kind of a rough, rough year, too. Those of you previously on the council know that to get these meetings held on Zoom and stay held on Zoom, you know that some things had to be done to the Michigan Civil Rights Commission. I won't expand on that, but those of you in the council know what I'm referring to. I've lived in Dearborn Heights for over 60 years. I'll be 61 in February, so that's a total. I retired from Taylor as a police officer. And I can say that, that having retired from the police department in Taylor, I worked closely with Dearborn Heights. Probably a lot of the men and women who were there then probably retired now. I can say that I wouldn't want to do the job now. It's tougher now probably than it was then. Public is not behind the police departments. And one of the problems now is the public perception. That's probably one of the worst it's been in a long, long time. Whether it's deserved or not, I'm not here to debate that, but I can say this. There definitely has to be a liaison between the community because the community doesn't understand a lot of things that the police do and have to, and why they do it, why they're being pulled over and all those kinds of things, and what they can and can't do, and why can't they give a ticket when recording, and all those kinds of things. Oh, I've got the video of the guy hot rodding up and down my street. Why can't you give him a ticket? All those kinds of things. And when the three council people attempted to set up this commission, you know, that was kind of shot down really quickly. And I would say, you know, give the mayor and the chief the opportunity to sit down, discuss this thing, flush out details, and see if they can work something out so that maybe we can get a community and a police department working together in something. And like one of the previous speakers said, perhaps we can work out something so that we can get a good link between the community of a great city of Dearborn Heights, I've lived in my whole life, and, and, and the police department, which we have a great department. Yes, we've got seven officers down right now, but that's, part of that is difficulty hiring because nobody wants to be cops just about anywhere because the pay is horrible, retirement's getting worse, and public perception is horrible. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak again and try and support our police department and our mayor until we can get this flushed out. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Dana, appreciate it. And thank you for your service on the police department. Much appreciated.
Hey.
I for one appreciate the police department.
Me too.
I think we all do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, I've just asked iPhone to unmute.
Okay, iPhone, if you could unmute, please. And please state your name, street you live on, and the city you live in. Are they, I don't know where you're at.
Sometimes on the iPhone, I think it's hard.
Is it? Okay, so we'll give them a couple seconds and then.
Oh, there they go. They're there. Okay.
They're on?
If they say their name.
Are you able to hear me?
Okay, now I can hear you. Please state your name, street you live on, city you live in, and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah. My name is Todd Williams. I live on Doc's State. I just wanted to come on here and address how my, my family, we support the mayor, Bill Bazey. And we also wanted to say that we support his decision and we appreciate the fact that he hired a police commissioner to better the police department. That's about it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's next up?
Mohammed.
Okay, Mohammed, please state your name, street you live on, city you live in, and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hey, I don't need too much of your time. I don't need the full three minutes, but I just wanted to mirror what the last person said.
Okay, sir, Mohammed?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. I thought you weren't going to say that. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say, my name is Mohammed, resident of Dearborn Heights. I live on Cronin Street. And yeah, I just, I wanted to mirror what the last person was saying. Totally support Mayor Bazey and his decisions. And there's, there's been a lot of controversy and a lot of like backlash towards his decision. But I feel like it's unfair because he did say that it's, it's still an ongoing issue and it's, it's a private matter. But yeah, I just, I wanted to say that I trust his leadership, especially what he's done since November. And the appointment of this new commissioner, Commissioner Thomas, shows like a gesture of willingness and openness to hire like a diverse force within the, within the city. And yeah, I totally support what he's doing and keep it up, everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it, sir? Okay, thank you.
I think it's, okay, we have another iPhone.
Next person is iPhone. Please state your name, street you live on, city you live in. Have they come on?
I hit, ask.
All right, so let's go to the next one, madam clerk. Is it on now?
Yep, there. Go ahead, iPhone.
It still shows muted on my end.
It is showing, okay. I thought it was, okay, we're going to go with Mike.
Okay, let's go ahead with Mike next. Please unmute yourself.
That was me. Okay, he's unmuted now.
Unmuted? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
All right, my name is Mahad Ayoub. I'm a former police officer with the city of Dearborn Heights. I just wanted to recap on a question that was asked earlier. There's a female that went up and asked why the department was seven officers short. I don't think that question should be asked to the mayor. That question should be asked to the administration on why the department's seven officers short. Throughout my three years of service with the city, I've experienced several officers that have left the department voluntarily due to an unhappy work life. Maybe that question should be asked to the administration or the chief of police on why these officers with two to three years of experience are leaving and seeking employment with other agencies. I think that raises a red flag. That question should not be asked to the mayor first. That question should be asked to the administration and the police department on why these officers are leaving. So if the council wants to look, look into that, that'd probably be great. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ayoub. Madam Clerk?
I have no one else that has their hands raised.
Okay, no one else on Zoom? Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak? All right.
I have two more, I'm sorry, on Zoom.
Two more on Zoom?
iPhone again. I'm going to try it.
Okay, well, let's let the gentleman from the audience speak. For those on Zoom and in the audience, if what you're going to be speaking of, and if you feel it's important to repeat it, it's up to you, but if it's the same thing that's been said before, there's really no sense in repeating it all over again, you know, just to be conscious of the time. Go ahead, please, sir.
Thank you very much, council chair. My name is Joseph Raina, Hopkins Street of Dearborn Heights. I am also a member of the Dearborn Heights Police Department. There's been a few words brought up here tonight that I'd like to talk about. The first one is respect. There are a couple of times that these gentlemen and ladies were pointed at and respect was talked about. Let me ask you folks, were any of you made aware of this before Monday morning about the police commissioner? No one was.
Not myself, I was not.
Neither was the police chief. Neither was any of us. So are we talking about respect going one way or is respect a two-way street? I believe that should go two ways. If there's an issue with someone at the top of the proverbial food chain in the police department, shouldn't his boss go talk to him about that before just blindsiding him with something to that nature of bringing in someone else? There was a comment made earlier from someone that said they had five lawsuits. When has anyone ever had five lawsuits going on at the same time against a police department? Ask yourself who the problem really is. If you have five lawsuits, why would you have that much police contact? Okay, let's move on to transparency. I've heard transparency brought up a couple of times. I have worked for this department in this city for 13 years. Right now, this is the most transparent department we have ever had since I have been here, and a lot of that is due to what Chief Myers has done and what he is doing. Now, I have not always agreed with Chief Myers, and if he was standing here, we could talk about some of the times we've butted heads and we've yelled at each other. But I will tell you that every decision he makes, because my office is close to his, he makes it in the best interest of the citizens of this city and the men and women of this police department. I can say that very confidently about him. There was another comment made, taking a shot at the men and women that work in our detective bureau, which I served in as well, said there's six dusty felony cases that are just laying around. I have worked in that department, and that is absolutely false. None of our detectives just sit around and do nothing while there's a dusty felony case sitting around. We are told that those cases have to be made a priority over the, over misdemeanor cases, and we work them as quickly as we can and as diligently as we can. However, we are working with several other outside agencies to get charges back on those, and there's several other reasons I could give you as to why they're delayed. Okay? Finally, since we're going to have an oversight committee, our person apparently over at the police department, can we get one over City Hall as well? I could sit here and I could sling mud, too, and throw some of the rumors out that I've heard about things going on at City Hall, but I'm going to choose to stop right there. But at what point do we bring someone in to look over what's going on at City Hall? Lastly, the supervisors that are here tonight, we have been without a contract since the middle of last year. Our union has tried to get this, tried to get the mayor to negotiate with us in good faith. We have not had one productive meeting towards negotiations, and we have been without a contract for at least seven or eight months at this point. I'm telling you, everything that is going on right now is calculated. This is one of the hardest working police departments that I've ever been at. I have worked for a few. I have been treating nothing but fairly throughout my career. I haven't gotten everything I've wanted, okay? But the men and women who work hard and put their nose to the grindstone are the ones that get what they deserve. There is no corruption in the Dearborn Heights Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the audience? All right, let's go ahead and go to the two on Zoom.
Yeah, I do only have one right now. I'm going to ask.
I'm sorry?
I only have one right now. I'm going to ask Mohammed.
I'm sorry? Yeah, you'll have, you want to speak, sir? Okay, but let me, let me let in the person on Zoom, and you'll go next, sir.
Zoom first? Okay. Oh, I do have another one up there, too. Okay, Mohammed.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mohammed Shahab. I live on Norburn Avenue. I just wanted to thank Mayor Bazey for all the positive changes he made in the city of Dearborn Heights with the recent news of the hiring of the police commissioner. I want to thank you for helping to clean up our police department from police corruption and favoritism from within the police department. I hope you continue to move in a more positive and productive direction. Thank you very much, and everybody have a great evening and be safe. That's all.
Thank you, Mohammed. All right, we're going to go ahead, go with the person in the audience, and then we'll go with the Zoom person next.
Hello, council.
Hello.
My name is Matthew Swirple. I live on Kinmore. Grew up on Robindale. I am a member of the, proud member of the city of Dearborn Heights Police Department, sergeant. Worked there for 25 years. Couple things. To attack the character of Chief Mark Myers, I don't know who's been here long or knows this, but back in May of 2006, late May, we had one of our officers slain. Corporal Mark Myers at the time was directly involved in stopping said subject. Corporal Mark Myers at the time was directly involved in stopping said subject. I highly doubt that an individual as credible as Mark is would be corrupt enough after doing such a valiant act and a heroic act and a sad act because I lost one of, a real good friend. I grew up in this city. I'm 52, I've lived here 52 out of those 52 years. I've had friends go to this school, I know friends from the south then. So I know this city well, probably better than everybody on this council. My whole point to this is, is this is wrong. We do not need a police commissioner. And I know what this is about. You're going to go and you're going to try to race bait this because we've had a demographic change within the city. I could pretty much get along with everybody. I don't have a problem with anybody. I went to Crestwood High School, I went to school with Middle Eastern, Yugoslavians, Irish, whatever. And that's what this is basically about. Somebody calling out because there's been a demographic change within the city of Dearborn Heights. Let's not fool ourselves, okay? But there is no corruption in the city of Dearborn Heights Police Department. I'm sure Commissioner Thomas is a wonderful man. What does he know about the city of Dearborn Heights? I've worked for the city of Dearborn Heights for 25 years. Like I said, why wasn't I given an opportunity to be police commissioner? To test for this? I'd be honest with you, mayor, I'd go and I would talk with you or to the city council and I would tell you what's going on. I've worked with Mark as a partner, I've worked with probably most of these guys. I'm an old buck, I know, I'm almost out the door. But I can tell you this, do not attack Mark Myers credibility. There's no, there's no corruption. And if that's true, if there is corruption, why wouldn't you go through the proper channels? Send it to the state police, mayor. That's exactly how you do a corruption investigation. And you still have an answer why we needed a commissioner. And I don't understand this. And for the city council to sit there and say he doesn't know that this is legal, is he a police officer, is he not a police officer? That's pretty important. Because of the fact that if I'm, I'm not willing to take orders from somebody that doesn't have the authority or the know-how, but I would take it from Mark Myers, who's my chief and continues to be my chief. And what you've done is wrong. And nobody that said that we support you, and I support you, I voted for you. I'll, I'll straight up tell you, I voted for you. Okay, based on some promises and I thought you were the right guy. But I'm not so sure anymore.
Thank you, sir. I, I do want to address just one thing. I can tell you, in all my conversations throughout City Hall, nothing's been based on race. So this is not a race decision. This is not about any type of race in one way or another. And and I hope we don't go in that direction. And I can tell you firsthand, at least in all my conversations with the mayor, not one conversation with him, either now or when he was on the council, has been about hiring somebody, favoring somebody or going with somebody based on one race or another. So I, I just want to state that, at least it's my personal opinion that it's, it's not about race. Thank you.
Is he a Realtor?
You could discriminate against Realtors.
I will agree with you, I definitely don't believe that this is a race thing.
Yeah, this is not a race thing and I don't want to go in that direction.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. I know he's not a Realtor. All right, you have another person on Zoom? Okay, three more people on Zoom. Again, I will give people the right to speak, no problem. But if it, if you're going to be repeating the same thing, you know, it's your choice. But if it's the same thing, there's no sense in hearing it again. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Lydia?
Lydia?
Yes, Lydia Popescu. I live on Hazelton, Dearborn Heights. And I just want to say that I support Mayor Bill Bazey. We support his decision making and we appreciate the fact that he's hired a police commissioner to better serve the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia, appreciate it. Next up?
No.
Concerned Eaton Senior.
It says. Thanks everyone for coming out.
Concerned Eaton Senior.
Okay, Concerned Eaton Senior, please go ahead. Please state your name, street and city you live in.
Renee Finazio, Party Street, Dearborn Heights. I just have some questions on how the mayor came about this because I've heard him in the past year before he was mayor on city council and then when he was running for mayor on how it was important to bring people up through the ranks, how it was important to acknowledge people for their longevity in the city. And I know that was a big thing before Mrs. Constance became the director, how she got to be that director. Mrs. Constance was the deputy director and he switched roles because she had longevity in the city and he got rid of the man that was there. So now he's not doing that, he's not promoting from within the city. He got rid of Mr. Jack and promoted somebody who doesn't have the education for that, that position. And he is now in charge of ordinance because of he has some longevity over Mr. Jack McIntyre. So I would like him to address how he is promoting from within. And he also was talking about he was going to acknowledge those within the city with longevity and that has not come to fruition either. So I have seen in the past year, he has told at least two lies in my eyes. The seniors are looking for answers. He has promised to come and sit with us on several occasions. Mayor Bazey, please walk through our doors one day, please.
Are we all set, ma'am?
Yes, I would like an answer, like, is he going to come promote from within? How is this man not promoted from then?
Okay, mayor, you want to answer?
Yeah, if they want to come, I mean, I could come to the Eaton Center anytime. I've been there several times in the last year or so. If you guys.
I have never seen you, I'm there on almost a daily basis.
I'm sorry?
I'm there almost on a daily basis and I have never seen you there.
Well, I've been there several times.
Yes. Okay, I'll look through the logbook then and I'll find out when you were there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
One more, Allison.
One more, go ahead. Allison, you said?
Allison.
Allison, go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is retired officer Robert Pacheco and I live in Lake City now. With, I was with the city of Dearborn Heights. I just want to make a comment, I just want to say to Bill Bazey, Bill, you and I have talked many a times in the high grades restaurant. I hope everything works out for you and Mr. Mark Myers. We, I support Mark. I work side by side with both, with, with them. And I hope that this comes to a good resolution and I know both those guys, I know you guys will make the right decisions and hopefully you got to take the good with the bad and I hope everything comes out good for both parties. Bill, you take care and Mark, you take care and be safe, both of you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? I'm sorry, not in the audience, on Zoom? Madam Clerk?
Leon?
One more, go ahead.
There you go.
Good evening, my name is Danny Leon, I live on Hazelton. I lived in this city for over 20 years. I think it's time for a change in our, the way we police our city. I think the mayor has a good idea of getting somebody accountable for everything that he does. Most of the officers in Dearborn Heights are good, hardworking people, with the exception of a few that take their job in their service, not the service of our residents. So I agree that the chief, the mayor appoints somebody that can oversee. Even though I think Chief Myers is a great guy, very, very good at his job, he shouldn't feel threatened if the mayor wants accountability as far as behavior within his officers. So I support the decision. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Leon. Anybody else on Zoom?
That's all we have.
Okay, nobody else in the audience? Okay, councilman, move to adjourn. Councilman Bedun with, move to adjourn, supported by Councilman Ray Muscat. On favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? The ayes have it, the ayes have it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.